April 19th, 2016, Longmont City Council says study session to order. Could we please start with the roll call?
Mayor Coombs.
Here.
Council members Bagley.
Here.
Christensen.
Here.
Finley.
Here.
Moore.
Here.
Peck.
Here.
Santos.
Here.
Mary Avacorn.
Okay, let's stand for Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the side of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So, Don, do you have the list for public invited to be heard?
I believe someone's still signing up. Mayor, let me go grab that.
Okay. to speak and give your name and address for the record.
Good evening, council members, city staff, citizens of Longmont. My name is Hal Morrison. I've lived at 236 Sunset Street for more than half my life. Hooray! The Sunset Street Bridge is about to open. While this is good news for a lot of folks, many of us living in the old town neighborhoods west of Maine are an area roughly bounded by the St. Verne, Hoover, Ninth, and Gay know this reopening will result in significant traffic impacts. Sunset, Third, Francis, and Spruce are little more than narrow neighborhood streets, although they may be designated as collectors. Once that bridge reopens, they will again serve as arterials. Traffic is encouraged to dogleg through our neighborhood because Francis north of Ninth, Sunset south of Boston are sized sufficiently to support that kind of traffic, and both Maine and Hoover remain congested. Concerned, I met with city staff at Public Works to see if mitigations were in order. Failing that, my next step was to meet with concerned residents in our neighborhoods to discuss issues and brainstorm solutions. Twenty-five neighbors identified several problems: too much traffic, even without the bridge, diverting around the Third and Sunset four-way stop, and speeding on our narrow neighborhood streets. How can city council help our sense of, preserve our sense of community? First, by lowering the speed limit on Sunset south of Third from 30 to 25. Several of the many good reasons to do so are: all of Third, Spruce, Francis, and Sunset north of Third are already 25. Sunset is so narrow that parking in front of our own homes is forbidden. The many driveways on Sunset require residents to back out into traffic, and Sunset lacks continuous sidewalks and bike lanes even after the bridge comes in. We'd also like to look at traffic calming devices employed strategically throughout the neighborhoods: additional neck downs, stop signs, enforcement, marked crosswalks, speed bumps, and installed radar signs. So, please, start by lowering the speed limit on Sunset, and then direct city staff to team with concerned neighbors and residents to help identify acceptable solutions. I appreciate the opportunity to come before you and make this case for calming traffic within our neighborhood, and I'm thrilled to see that reconstruction of the Greenway from Sunset to Rogers Grove has begun.
Thank you. Ellie Barlow and Nancy Lewis, looks like they signed up together.
Hello, I'm Ellie Balo with the American Cancer Society. My address is 479 Wright Street, and...
I'm Nancy Lewis. If I look familiar, perhaps you shop at Target, because that's where I work, and I've been there since we became super. But my main reason for being here with Ellie is I'm a 16-year cancer survivor, very committed to the American Cancer Society's Relay for Life, and so that's why I'm here today with Ellie.
So, in case you don't know, Relay for Life is an overnight fundraiser. It's going to be June 17th overnight to the 18th, and it starts 6:00 PM to 6:00 AM. It's going to be at Village at the Peaks. It is, like I said, an overnight walking fundraising event, and I would like to challenge the city of Longmont to join us in the fight against cancer and form a team and join us overnight for the Walk for a Cure.
Do you walk from 6:00 till 6:00 AM?
Yes. The goal is to go 6:00 PM to 6:00 AM. We have zumba at 11:00 PM. We have yoga at 5:00. We're going to bring out the roller derby, possibly at 1:00 or 2:00 in the morning, cupcake eating contest. It's going to be tons of fun, and we would love to have you there with us. And I just wanted Nancy to share a little bit more.
The event is actually June 24th, I think you said, but it, yeah, I know. It's Friday night, June 24th, and the premise is cancer never sleeps for, so for one night, we won't either. Councilman Santos, I have heard your wife's name mentioned very, with admiration as regard to Relay. I know she, I serve on the committee this year, the volunteer committee of leadership. I know she chaired it for many years and had a great relay. That's where we want to get back to. I want to get back to that point that she had and raise lots of money to fight cancer. There is, Relays are held all over the Denver area. There's one held in Firestone, and they make like twice the money we do here in Longmont, and that's not right. We should be making more money than them. So, that's why we need your help in participating with us, getting us to the right people, so that the city of Longmont becomes involved and helps us raise money to fight cancer. Thank you so much.
So, yes, the days are June 24th to 25th, right here in front of me. And can I give this information to someone?
Sure.
Yes. Great. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming and throwing down the gauntlet between Longmont and Firestone. Gary Richardson?
Good evening. Mayor Coombs, City Council, and people of Longmont as well. My name is Gary Richardson, and I'm here with my wife, Nancy. And we're both here, actually, we thought it was going to be next week, but we came in tonight just to deliver two packets of information, her letter and my letter regarding the bomb farm HOA. Basically, like I said, we actually thought it was going to be tonight, so we're going to be meeting you next week. And actually, we've heard that there's a lot of lobbying going on about bomb farm and how good it can be, and we're actually here because we've been here for quite a while, about 30 years, and we're trying to put some information that, there's some very good data that could be probably not being given to you, and also there's some problems with the overstatement of the drastic change that the neighborhood would be faced with should the decisions go the way they would like them to go. But rather than bring that up now, again, I just want to thank you very much for having us, and the letters we have, there are places, we have our numbers on it. Should anybody have any question at all, please don't hesitate at all. Again, thank you so much.
Thank you. William Jennings?
Okay, my name is William Jennings. I live at 235 Sunset Street. I've been a voting human being at that residence. I voted some of you in, and I tried to vote some of you out. My biggest issue is that when I moved into this street 25 years ago, I never envisioned that I had to put up a big yellow light to let people know that I'm trying to pull out of my driveway. The traffic there before the bridge went out was terrible. Every afternoon, there'll be 15 cars at the stop sign, people trying to get through the stop sign that are trying to get away from Hoover. I didn't envision this 25 years ago. I never would have thought this kind of traffic would have been on this little two-lane road, but that's not the way it is now. And now that you've made the bridge even twice as big as it is, I'm assuming that there'll even be more traffic than there was before, and I just don't understand that. It's a very small road. There's not even bicycle paths big enough for people to get down the road. I'm hoping that the city council can come up with some idea of rerouting traffic, but we've been fighting that on Third Avenue now for 30 years. I don't know what you're going to do. I don't have the answer for you, but that's your job to figure it out. Speed bumps aren't going to do it because it's a Darryl Mill run. I think we need more enforcement myself. Since that marijuana shop went down the street, I haven't seen too much police protection in the area. I walk that street every day. Every day I'm walking on Sun Street. I see these people coming and going from the pot shop, throwing their garbage out their windows, and smoking their doobies as they walk up the street. Every day I see somebody walk up and down that street to purchase some form of marijuana and then partake with it as they come up the street. Now, if you would just put a cop there, even a, somebody that is, that can look and see this like I see it, maybe, maybe we can do something about it. I don't know, but 25 years, I'm about ready to leave this neighborhood because it's just not what it was. Anyway, thank you.
Thank you.
Kedus to the city of Longmont, electric, another snowstorm. I didn't lose my power.
Debbie Adams?
Good evening, City Council. Interesting to follow the gentleman. I'm here to give you food for thought for your May 10th meeting, and this is in honor of 420, and it is meant to be an education. We are witnessing a turning point in America's relationship with cannabis. Thousands of years before the illicit drug industry, the cannabis plant was used medicinally and industrially. Evidence of the plant being used in medicine as well as for recreational enjoyment can be found in societies as diverse as ancient China, Rome, and Egypt. Fast forward to 1611, when Jamestown settlers brought the hemp plant to North America. Believe it or not, it was patriotic to grow hemp. It was known that hemp fibers were strong and durable and provided excellent raw materials for paper, ship sails, fabric, and rope. According to the diaries of George Washington and Thomas Jefferson, they farmed hemp. James Madison, the father of the Constitution, claimed hemp gave him the insight to create a new democratic nation. In the 19th century, cannabis emerged as a mainstream medicine in the West. Studies in the 1840s found that cannabis suppressed headaches, increased appetites, and aided people to sleep. By 1850, cannabis had made its way into the US pharmacopeia, which listed it as a treatment for numerous afflictions. The temperance movement of the 1890s suggested cannabis as an alternative to alcohol consumption because alcohol abuse increased the risk of domestic violence while cannabis did not. In the 1930s, along comes Harry J. Anslinger, Commissioner of the Federal Bureau of Narcotics and the architect of national prohibition, who demonized cannabis and sparked the war on drugs. With the aid of William Randolph Hearst and exceptional yellow journalism, there was a coordinated effort by the government to shut down marijuana with fear and intimidation. Today, we're learning a host of amazing medicinal and therapeutic benefits associated with cannabis. The reality and truth is this non-toxic plant that grows from the earth is something of a wonder drug. When you research all the info that is now available, it does shed light on cannabis, a new light on cannabis. There is a movement calling for the end of global marijuana prohibition and to remove it from the schedule of controlled substances. Alcohol, tobacco, and opiates all have staggering death rates, while no deaths have been reported from cannabis consumption. Propaganda has been force-fed to our society for generations to become embedded in our culture. We seriously need to consider how much we have learned and evolved in 100 years. Shouldn't it be our human and civic duty to be open to new knowledge and be educated instead of holding steadfast onto falsehoods that have been a burden on our society for decades, causing more harm than good? Now is the time to lift the misinformation stigma and to be enlightened.
Your three minutes are up, I'm sorry.
To open up the, I'll take three minutes from the next person.
Well, we, no, we don't do that.
To open up the conversation, to encourage public, you can listen to one more paragraph.
One order, Mayor. Just three minutes for each.
Yeah, that's, that's...
Denny, can I have a few seconds?
No, no, we don't do that. I'm sorry, Debbie.
Well, one more paragraph.
You can...
One paragraph.
I know, but that's just the rules or...
I'll give it to him, too.
Okay. Denny Driscoll's next.
Now is the time to lift the misinformation stigma and to be enlightened, to open up the conversation, to encourage public education...
Excuse me, just, can you give your name and address first, please?
And to benefit the community with regulation and taxation of this very thriving green operation. My name is Denny Driscoll, Gooseberry Drive, Longmont, Colorado.
Thank you.
Esteemed civic leaders and concerned citizens of Longmont, when I moved in here in 2001, I recall standing at the corner of Maine and Third, imagining a bit more developed town, more metropolitan, but not too much. There were about nine pot shops and pawn shops and a few restaurants. Fifteen years later, the community I call home has grown significantly. Today, the vibrant and growing downtown relies a growing community, a business leadership, and creative thinking that makes us all proud to call Longmont home. A few years ago, Colorado Amendment 64 passed in 2012, providing a clear mandate for the cannabis industry in Colorado. Eyes carried the day 55% to 45%, and approximately 2.5 million people participated in that discussion. Since then, successful implementation of the cannabis industry has generated opportunity and revenue for the state of Colorado. Data is pouring in that supports the decision to legalize pot. Our community, for some reason, has no cannabis industry, an industry that provides business opportunities, revenue generation, convenience, treatment of medical conditions, production of sustainable resources for paper, building supplies, and clothing. While certain cannabis products produce intoxicating effects and certainly should be regulated, most evidence points to reductions in violence and uncivility where it is present. You will hear and have no doubt heard a lot of discussion regarding the permission or prohibition of cannabis, some based on facts and some based on fables. The truth is, there's a lot of local political power in this room, and it seems that perhaps the will of the people may have been forgotten. Today, there was a closed poll in the local paper, The Times Call, which asked if people were in favor or not. That was closed as of today. For both medicinal and recreational marijuana, 59% voted for, 33% against. I think that three years to gather data and make a safer, more informed decision is enough, and it's time to move forward in the name of common sense and civil majority. I'm here today as a concerned citizen and registered voter to stand in favor of the permission of the cannabis industry.
Thank you. Unfortunately, your three minutes are up. I'm sorry, we can't have more.
Not bad.
You did good. Thanks. John Pennick?
John Pennick. I live on Statighorn Drive in the city of Longmont, and I'm not going to use three minutes. I'm just going to recite some numbers of the city of Boulder's sales and use tax report. This is the revenues they... This is the revenues they gained last year from the sale of marijuana. Total revenues they have received in taxes was four million eight hundred and thirty-nine thousand dollars. Two million two hundred and sixty-seven thousand came from sales and use tax. Four hundred and forty-eight thousand came from the state's shareback of the tax they levy. The state's levy is a ten percent tax. They give fifteen percent back to the municipality it was levied. And 2.1 million dollars came from the additional taxes the City of Boulder imposes on the sale of marijuana and marijuana products. I don't use it, but to be honest with you, I think the city is missing out on a huge amount of revenue. It's in the city already. It's on Sunset Street, although technically not in the city. We should rent it within the city. We should get that tax revenue and permit ourselves, the city council members, to regulate that industry. Thank you.
Thank you. Amy Barnett?
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Thank you for sharing your time with me tonight. My name is Amy Barnett. I live at Jewel Drive. I am a forty-six-year-old married mother of three and a lifelong cannabis activist. Presently, I work at the farm in Boulder, which is a recreational cannabis dispensary. However, I am not here representing the farm. I am here as a citizen of Longmont. My family and I have called Longmont home for nearly two years now, and we love it here, and we want to see this community continue to grow and thrive. One of the topics I wanted to touch on tonight is the perception that society has of cannabis users. We are not your stereotypical slackers who lack ambition and motivation. Gone is the antiquated stigma that all cannabis users are Cheech and Chong. I am the face of cannabis. And as a sales associate in the industry, I can assure you that the majority of the guests are just like me. Many are there for alternative methods to control their constant pain. They have no desire to use dangerous and addictive opiates. Others come to see me for a more natural method to help manage things like depression, anxiety, and insomnia. People are educating themselves to the benefits of cannabis, and it is quite evident in the enormous boom in sales this year alone. Almost half of the business in my shop is tourists. The amount of revenue, and that leads me right into the point that I'd like to touch on next. The amount of revenue recreational and medical cannabis can bring to our community can no longer be ignored. The time is now, ladies and gentlemen. The city has complete control over how many shops go up, and they get to make all the rules. And next, the two that are on the edge of town, or else all we will have is businesses going up all around town, and we'll get the trickle-down from the county, but we won't get the direct revenue from them. The cannabis movement is very real, ladies and gentlemen, and it is steaming ahead with or without Longmont. We have the opportunity to get in on the ground floor of what will be a hundred-story building before this is over. Let's not let our community fall any farther behind in this cannabis revolution. There are several guests that shop in my store that come from Longmont, bolstering that community's revenue, not ours. There is a clear demand, my friends, and it is time to supply. Thank you.
Thank you. Ashley Weber?
Okay, can everybody hear me all right?
Yeah.
Okay. My name is Ashley Weber, and I'm on Feather Reed Avenue. I hope I can see everybody. I'm here as to follow up in... As far as cannabis is concerned, and I am here to tell my story as a cannabis patient. I was injured when I was eighteen, and I just... It helps me with my pain and my spasticity, and I just have to let everybody know that there's... You can come off of a lot of pain medication, and like others have said, opiates. There's a lot of opiate abuse here, and we can see that it will bring opiate usage down, and a lot of people have seen that. And as far as the revenue, I feel that Longmont is definitely missing out on a lot, and as previous speakers have said, you guys do have control. So you can say what goes up where and who comes in and how many. And as the gentleman before, maybe he wouldn't get so upset with having people, you know, drive through his community if there were other places to go. And it's hard for patients to drive on the edge of town where we do have medical dispensaries because it's really hard to get to. For me, I don't drive, so for me to get my medicine, it takes me a little bit out of my way. A little bit... A few more things that I'd like to touch on is I... I'm here actually representing... I'm on the Colorado Normal Board, and that's the National Organization for Marijuana Reform Laws, and we push really hard to help with education and letting others know that it's not taboo any longer, and there are a lot of people using it for many different ailments. We see topicals, you know, just as far as CBD products and hemp alone. So I think it would be very smart for Longmont to lift the ban and allow medical dispensaries to come into Longmont. I also think that education is a big thing that everybody is missing here. It's stereotypical that we all know what stoners are, and I think that it's time that Longmont put a program together that may educate the citizens of Longmont and further the education and help people. So that's all I gotta say. Thanks.
Thank you, Ashley. Gene Allen?
Mayor Coombs and city council members. I live at... I'm Gene Allen. I live at eleven-twenty Sherman Street, which is northwest Longmont. I was the startup city planner for the city of Longmont some sixty years ago. I'm here this evening not with a purpose asking for anything. It's a natural for those people to be here to ask, to request. I'm here to thank you and previous city councils, mayors, and professional people, engineers on the staff of the city of Longmont for the tremendous job that you have done in providing water for this growing community. When I was planning director here, we did not have thirty thousand people within the city limits of Longmont yet. I think we guessed at it and missed it by three points, three people, or something like that. I'm not representing a committee, but I believe I'm representing tens of thousands of people who should have a great appreciation for the way the water system and other major decisions have been handled in this community. Having been the startup planner for four other cities in Colorado and a couple of counties, first planning director, maybe I'm in a position to have an opinion about when things are done well and continuously, and that's my sole purpose here as an individual, hopefully representing tens of thousands to express gratitude for you and previous elected officials and professionals that have brought the city of Longmont to where it is. My wife and I... I'm crowding ninety years old. She's a little behind me, but I won't talk about that. We appreciate it. We have been full-time residents here, property owners and residents, for over forty years. After I left here, I went on to other places and started up some other planning programs: Fort Collins, Grand Junction, Delta. That's about it. I also worked for the city of Boulder as the assistant planning director. So I hope I have qualifications to kind of take a look at the overview. If I don't have some of those qualifications, I've been in the wrong profession, folks. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Mike Hankins?
Hello. Good evening, Mayor, council, and staff. I just want to take a few minutes of your time this evening to express some... An issue for my community, which is a bond farm neighborhood. I'm sorry, I live at fourteen-twenty-one Spruce Avenue. And as was stated earlier, we're looking forward to having our Sunset Bridge back. It's... While we've been able to manage it, it's definitely been a little bit of an inconvenience to not have that, and I know all of us as a city are looking forward to having that bridge back. With that bridge, as was stated earlier, we're looking at increased traffic through our neighborhood. I live on Spruce Street, and prior to the bridge going out, there is quite a bit of through traffic that comes down our street, trying to get around some other areas, whether it be getting off of Third Avenue and bridging to other areas of town. So we're looking to see if the city can help us mitigate and help us reduce any issues in the areas in regards to both traffic enforcement and keeping our area safe. We would look, first of all, for enforcement of the current traffic laws as they exist today, and looking forward to, you know, some increased police activity to help us manage the traffic that will be there with the current laws in effect there. Secondly, if we can reach any mitigation activities for the area, whether that be decreased speed limits in a couple of areas or speed humps as they exist on Sunset Avenue north of Third Avenue, if we can introduce maybe some more of those in areas of our neighborhoods that are used as through streets for the increased amount of traffic. In addition to the traffic from the bridge, we're also looking at the new bond farm co-op that's moving in. That's gonna add a significant number more vehicles to our neighborhood. So all of that gathered, we're just looking to city council and the city to help us maintain the safety of our streets and our area. Appreciate all the time. I'm sure the traffic engineers are looking at these activities, and we know that they probably have more ideas than even we can think of as the general citizenry, but look forward to the city helping manage our area. Again, thank you so much for all of the work that's been done for the Sunset Bridge. I know you've probably heard many, many times on how anxious we all are to get that bridge back. We're looking forward to such a great new bridge that's gonna be there. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Marilyn Hughes?
Good evening, Mayor Coombs and council members. Marilyn Hughes, eleven-twenty-six Fourth Avenue. First, let me give a shout-out to Representative Jonathan Singer for his driver's license bill, House Bill sixteen-twelve-seventy-four. This bill will help make Colorado's roads safer, and I hope you will support it. I'd also like to thank you for the new trash rate plan that actually incentivizes recycling and encourages less trash going into the landfill. I generally put my trash out once or twice a month, and I actually do carry it myself sometimes, and so a forty-eight-gallon container really works for our household putting it out twice a month. I also appreciate the chance to have compostable materials and organics picked up twice monthly, especially yard waste, which is totally inappropriate to go into a landfill. Please, please, please pass both ordinances. I've been waiting for composting at the... On the... Well, let's just say a long time. Secondly, I am concerned about the Windy Gap water purchase and have several questions. I would like to understand why the water was purchased and who it might be sold to. Water is absolutely necessary to life. It should be used for crops and maintaining water supplies for city residents and businesses, not new development or fracking. And how will this water purchase be paid for? I support a cash option. Bonding the money for twenty years puts onus on two generations to pay off the bonds. We're already in debt for twenty years for the mall, and we have to find fifty-seven million dollars for flood mitigation projects. So I think this is too much debt for your constituents. Thank you for listening.
Thank you. Tom Lang?
Good evening, Mayor, council. Tom Lang. I live at eighteen-twenty-three Arapahoe Drive here in town, which, if you aren't familiar with the geography, is kind of at the corner of Third and Sunset, where that four-way stop is. It kind of cuts the corner there. And I'm here, along with others, to express our concern. The bridge opening is kind of a mixed bag. You know, it'll be nice. It'll be a more direct route to a lot of places in town, but I think it's also going to be the return of a lot of cut-through traffic along our street there, where I don't understand the logic necessarily, but some people coming east on Third will dip into our little street and race down to Sunset and save five seconds or whatever it is. You know, it's kind of silly, but that's been... It was much worse before the flood, but it's been still pretty steady even with the bridge out. I think with native routes down there, it's continued or contributed to the traffic, but I think once the bridge opens, we're really gonna see it return in earnest. So I'm gonna ask the city and staff, maybe some next steps on looking at mitigation things we can do for our street, maybe an assessment, possibly speed bumps, some signage, just anything to kind of help. You know, it's one thing when people are cutting through at twenty-five, thirty miles an hour, but you'd be amazed at some of the speeds people hit going down this street with no regard to... I have two sons. We have a lot of children on this block, and it's a safety factor that is probably just gonna get worse as the bridge... Time will tell, but I think something should be done. If we get some direction on where we could go as staff, on next steps, that sort of thing, I think that would be great, and I'd like you to consider these things as this new bridge opens, which appreciate your time. Thank you.
Thank you, Tom. John Heron?
Hello, Mayor and council. My name's John Heron. I live at eighteen-twenty-five Third Avenue, so I'm here, just like the other folks, to kind of bring up the traffic issues, you know, kind of confidence in numbers here with more people, but it is a concern of ours. I have a six-year-old, and we... So the front of our house is on Third, the back of our house is on Arapahoe. Arapahoe has become a major cut-through for people trying to get around the four-way stop. With the bridge opening and traffic backing up down Third, which we watch every day at, you know, prime rush-hour times, that cut-through will become more and more through what, you know, essentially is just kind of a private drive to these homes that are on Arapahoe and people come racing down. We'll see people in excess of forty, fifty miles an hour on a street that's, you know, four blocks long. So with little kids that play out there, we'd just like some consideration to be taken by the city, what can be done for the people on Sunset as well. You know, we use Sunset on our bikes to get to the Greenway when it's open, things like that. Sunset is a gauntlet with people going up and down it. Now that the bridge is gonna get bigger, we're concerned about just increased traffic and things like that. So any considerations that can be made, we would appreciate. Thank you.
Thank you, John. Sherman Bowman?
Thank you. I'm Sherman Bowman, eighteen-seventy-five Third Avenue. Like John, I live just down the street. Front's on Third, back's on Arapahoe. I've got two little girls. Once again, traffic. I think I can't say it much better than John and/or Tom said. Signage would be a great first start for us. A lot of people race down Arapahoe, and they don't know that there's, you know, there's a huge... A large population of children there now, and they're always been. So some folks are racing down there, and they're not knowing. And typically, when we put out, you know, little signs of our own, you know, the little guys with the flags, they'll slow down and they'll cooperate. So I think if we can just start with some signage, I think that would be a good first step. Additionally, the gentleman who was talking about Spruce, east of Third, is also... I use that to get around the bridge coming home from work, and I've had to be very mindful of my speed because a lot of walkers there, a lot of people out with families, same thing. of my speed because a lot of walkers there, a lot of people out with families, same thing. So I think, in general, just reiterating the concerns that we have in the overall area there with the bridge reopening, with native routes being there, we are seeing that speeding traffic and we just want your help. Thank you.
Thank you. James Kenworthy.
James Kenworthy, 107 Caribou Place. I thought I'd throw my two cents worth in on the Windy Gap project. If rain falls on the western slope, that water should stay on the western slope. We have no business taking it. And as, that water is a myth. As I understand it, it's good, we're going to get water when we, when the western slope has excess water. When's that going to happen? And it says something here about long-term cash flow. That's a myth also. I'm going to be really interested to see how long it takes to fill up that reservoir. I would guess that I'll be dead before it's full. I don't know, several years ago, we had seven medical marijuana shops in this city and the city council at that time closed them up, which was an extremely foolish thing to do. Seven empty businesses, seven families lost their business. Pot shops. We really ought to have some marijuana sales in the city. You'd make a lot of money. You could use, put that money to good use. And just for the, at the end, I want to say I'm ready to opt-in on curbside composting. Thank you.
Thank you, James. Matt Churchfield.
Hi, I'm Matt Churchfield, I live at 1412 Third Avenue. I just want to kind of express the same thing about the traffic. We live a few blocks east of the golf course and just kind of concerned coming up with the Sunset Bridge opening and just makes you start thinking about, it's, Sunset is going to be a problem. Third is already sort of problematic with speed that goes on, cars driving too fast. Francis, I see the same problem on Francis, so I think we just need to take some time to study what's going on there and think about what can be done. So we have three small kids. It's nice to go out in our front yard, but we can't hear each other because cars are going fast. If they could just go twenty-five miles per hour, the noise would be cut down and that would be, that would be really huge. Walking down Third is noisy. We always cut off to Fourth. If people come over, I'm always telling them, "Don't park on Third, drive around the corner" because even though you can park there, it's, I don't feel comfortable leaving a car on I go twenty-five on Third, but then I have a line of traffic piling up behind me, so people really don't go that fast. There's a sign that says, "No trucks over seven thousand pounds." And I know that if somebody's delivering something into the neighborhood, that's fine, but there's an awful lot of big trucks that go by and for reference, fifteen-foot U-Hauls, eight thousand pounds, so I don't think people are following those rules. So, I think the main thing is, it says twenty-five miles per hour, people don't do it, it needs to be enforced a little better and maybe think about, long-term, what can we do with the traffic? One other thing, Central School, there's a crosswalk that goes across Third and there's kids that go there every morning, so we need to take care of that. I don't know what the solution is, but I'm happy to sit down with whoever. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anybody else that hasn't spoken yet that'd like to speak? Public invited to be heard. Please come up and state your name and address.
Hello, City Council. My name is Mary Ann Riggi. My resident, present residence is 2210 North Main Street, Longmont, Colorado. I am a Corratin and a Longmont resident. I have two pages that I wrote, I probably won't get through it all, but I was glad, I was grateful that the young woman spoke. I'm not promoting marijuana, but I do believe that more medical care, here we go, is needed in some of the senior residences. Some people aren't certified, I've witnessed this, I'm a retired speech therapist and I've noticed this. So, I'm not complaining or saying, or being critical, I'm just saying that it is needed because residents where I've lived, I'm leaving for a different reason. I'm leaving because my income will go down next month because of my pension plan, I'm saying that when I turn sixty-five, it will go down two hundred twelve dollars a month. I'm happy to say that I will possibly be moving into a senior residence run by the city and I'm looking forward to it if I meet the requirements. What I'd also like to say is that I was injured in two bus accidents by RTD, they were supposed to pay my medical bills and they haven't, and I hope this is viewed by the audience and not cut. So, I'm saying that people, another thing is that people are made houseless because in apartments, they are often told to leave with less than ten days' notice and this is against the law and is against the lease. So please do something to start nonprofits, whoever's out there who will do this, to prevent this from happening because it happens to people all over the country, in Longmont, in Boulder County, in Denver, in Pennsylvania, in every state in this country. And please make sure that the landlords and management companies follow the law and do not kick people out with less than ten days' notice. Thank you very much. Have a nice evening. Take care, God bless.
Thank you. Is there anybody else I'd like to speak? Okay, seeing no one, I'll close. Public invited to be heard. So now, Janice Revhen, the President of Sister Cities, is here to introduce the Longmont Students, ambassadors and chaperones.
Good evening, Mayor Coombs and City Council. It's my honor to introduce our delegations that will travel to Ciudad Guzman, Mexico and Chino, Japan this summer. Would I, can I invite up my Mexican students?
Sure.
Come on up. We have a wonderful group of ambassadors this year. Come on up. All right, Kiara, you've done this before. Why don't you start us up?
Hola, mucho gusto. Me llamo Kiara Drake and I previously went to Chino, Japan, and this year I'm going to Ciudad Guzman. It's a wonderful thing, I'm very excited to go. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Chelsea Vandy. I go to Fox Stop Academy in eighth grade and I'm very excited to go to Mexico this year.
Hola, me llamo Madryn Granger y tengo quince años y asisto a la primaria de Silver Creek y tengo mucho emocionada para voy a México esta, esta primera vez. Gracias.
That was so good. Hola. Mucho gusto. Me llamo Hannah Williams. I am from Mead High School and I'm happy to have this opportunity to go to Mexico. I'm sixteen and I want to thank you.
Hi, my name is Kate Desmond. I go to Westview Middle School. I'm fourteen and I'm really excited to be able to go to Ciudad Guzman, Mexico this year.
Hola, mucho gusto. Me llamo Kira Miller. I go to Naiwat High School and I'm so excited to get the opportunity to go to Mexico this summer. Thank you.
Following our wonderful ladies, as you noticed, our entire student delegation to Mexico this year is female, so I am sure our friends in Mexico will be very excited about that. And we have two wonderful chaperones who some of you may know, but Missy, you want to?
Hola, mucho gusto. Me llamo Mitzi Nicoletti. So de Longmont and gracias, look forward to going to Mexico as a chaperone. Thank you.
Buenas noches, soy Whitney Meyer. Soy una consejera en la preparatoria de Silver Creek y también era maestra de español antes, pero estoy muy emocionada para visitar Ciudad Guzman también con esta delegación de niñas.
So I know some of you do speak Spanish, but anybody speak Japanese up here?
I can say my name, that's it.
Okay, yes, I'm sure you can. All right, can I have my Japanese delegation stand up? This is our next delegation. You want to start us up?
Konbanmo, watashi no nome wa Mjedos. Good evening, my name is Mary Jane and I'm going to be going to Chino, Japan, and I'm very thrilled about that, so thank you for sponsoring us.
I'm Mark Riddle, I go to Silver Creek High School and I'm grateful for this opportunity. Thank you so much.
Hi, I'm Andrew DiMaggio. I go to Twin Peaks Charter Academy and I thank you very much. I'm excited to go to Japan.
Hi, I'm Claudia Blackwell and I'm really excited to go to Japan and I go to Skyline High School and I'm a freshman.
Hello, I'm Pamela Rogers and I go to Silver Creek High School and I am very excited to go to Japan and thank you for sponsoring Longmont Sister Cities.
Konichiwa, my name is Jewel Ung. I am fifteen years old. I attend Naiwat High School and I'm very excited for this opportunity. Thank you for sponsoring us.
Hi, my name's Emily Milliken. I'm a junior at Silver Creek High School. Thank you so much for this opportunity to go to Japan.
And our two chaperones?
I have notes in my speech. Konichiwa. Watakashiwa, Nicole Johnson, Dace. This is my first time at a city council meeting and I've only watched them on YouTube, so thank you.
Konichiwa. Watakashiwa, Donna Hardy, Dace. Arigato. I'm one of the chaperones for Japan and I have the privilege of taking eight amazing young teenagers to Japan and I want to thank the city council for giving me this opportunity to do so.
Thank you, John. Does City Council have any questions or advice for our delegations this year?
Well, I would just like to personally thank the chaperones that are, you know, giving away their time to make this all happen because without volunteers like this, this program couldn't happen. So thanks again for the commitment you make to this program. Anybody else like to, councilmember Santos?
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. I've been to both cities. Both cities can be very warm. Especially in July, so dress comfortably, drink a lot of water. And in Chino, there are many, many vending machines, so I have plenty of yen to spend on vending machines. In Ciudad, in Ciudad Guzman, not so much, however, they will, both cities will take very good care of you. So we look forward to hearing, hopefully hearing your stories when you return. Safe travels and keep up with your Spanish and your Japanese. Good luck.
Councilmember Christiansen.
I want to wish all of you, whether you're going to Mexico or Japan, to have a wonderful time. I was fortunate enough last year to be able to go to Japan and I had a wonderful time. People were very, very warm and kind and I was, I was very heartened. And watch the vending machines because sometimes you'll get pumpkin soup instead of, you know, grape soda, so, thanks.
All right, well, thank you very much. We look forward to having you participate. Oh, I'm sorry.
Oh, excuse me. Councilmember Finley.
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. Didn't mean to interrupt you, Janice. I just wanted to say to the kids, remember, you're representing our city. We expect you to do so in a, in a manner that would make us all proud and we know that you will and I hope you have a good time.
Thank you, Janice.
Okay, thanks again for your sponsorship and we look forward to having you at some of our events this summer. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor, the first item on the study session agenda is the Envision Longmont Aging Well Summary of Recommendations and Erin Fosdick and Michelle Waite will be presenting.
Good evening, Mayor Coombs, members of the City Council. I'm Erin Fosdick with the Planning and Development Services Division. Tonight, I'm joined by Michelle Waite with Senior Services and Maureen Denning, who's the Chair of the Senior Citizens Advisory Board. We're also joined by several members of our Envision Longmont Aging Well Assessment Team and other members of the Senior Citizens Advisory Board. I know we don't have time, unfortunately, to introduce everyone tonight, but I'd like for members of the team and the Senior Citizens Board just to stand up so that council can see the folks that participated in this effort and we're very grateful for, for everyone's participation and coming tonight, so thank you very much. And senior services staff as well, I'm sorry. So what we, what we want to do tonight is kind of cover some of the information that we've provided in your communication, which includes some overview information as well as a summary of recommendations. What we'll do tonight is present some data to really set the stage, provide an overview of our Envision Longmont Aging Well process, talk about how this effort really fits in with some other efforts that the city has undertaken, and then obviously summarize some of the recommendations. So the three of us will kind of tag-team this presentation. I do want to point out early on that we really felt like this was an opportunity to coordinate with some existing efforts, primarily the Envision Longmont effort, which you've heard a lot about. It's an update to our Longmont Area Comprehensive Plan and Multimodal Transportation Plan, and also really an effort to coordinate with some of the customer and community partner survey data. So you'll see that as kind of a continuing theme throughout this presentation. So really, why are we here tonight? This is really an opportunity for us as a city to plan for our growing older adult population. We can be proactive and we can really increase our knowledge and understanding around some of the issues and opportunities that are going to be facing our community over the next several years. You can see from this chart that by 2025, the percentage of people living in Longmont will more than double, so we'll have, over twenty-two percent of Longmont's population will be over fifty-five by 2025. That's actually, I guess, less than ten years away now. This is very interesting because this is a much faster rate of growth than the other segments of our population. So just for comparison, the community as a whole grows about one to one and a half percent each year, so this is quite, quite higher. The other thing that we want to point out, which isn't shown in this chart, but is really important to remember as we go through the presentation, is caregivers, including caregivers of older adults, are increasing at a pretty fast rate. So twenty-nine percent of the US population cares for someone who is ill, disabled, or aging. Fifty percent of people that are, that receive care are over the age of fifty and about fifty percent of caregivers utilize some type of assistance. So this is important for us as an organization. Really, you know, if you kind of look at some of those statistics, as a nation and certainly as a community, we can't afford to ignore the role of caregivers and family in our informal caregiving system, so please keep that in mind as we go through tonight. As we just discussed, generally, the population of older adults is increasing in Longmont and the county as a whole. What you can see in this graph is that the portion of folks that are eighty-five and above, so the kind of older, older adults, is increasing extremely quickly. So, basically, as you can see from this graph, the number of people that are in that, those oldest cohorts, eighty-five and above, is expected to increase at an average annual rate of ten percent. Why do we call out the folks that are in that eighty-five-plus age range in addition to that extremely fast growth rate? These folks tend to be, they may be lower income, they may be women more often than not, and these are the people that are going to be in most need of our support services, so it's important to, to keep that in mind. But I think you can see that the growth in, in all of these cohorts is pretty staggering. This increase holds implications, not just for caregivers, family members, senior services staff, as well as agencies that are providing direct service, but really for our organization as a whole, so it's, it's kind of going to be a mind shift for us as we move forward. As I mentioned early on, we really saw this as an effort to do some proactive planning to make sure that current and future residents in Longmont have the ability to age in place. So what do we mean by that? That people that are living in Longmont either have the ability to stay in their own homes if they choose or at a minimum to stay in the community. And we know that this population is And we know that this population is going to have, there's a number of issues and also opportunities, so as we think about the 55-plus population going forward over the next 10 to 20 years, what are some of the things that we're looking at? You know, it ranges from housing options, different types of transportation choices, employment opportunities, the types of support services that this population will need, health and wellness, which includes recreational opportunities, as well as, again, some of the family and caregiver implications that we need to be thinking about. So a little bit about the process. You know, keep in mind some of those implications that we just talked about on the previous slide. We're going to talk a little bit about this process specifically, and really how this all started was, as you all know, I know Michelle has presented the Age Well Boulder County Strategic Plan, which was last updated in 2015. We really saw this as an opportunity to explore the goals and strategies presented in that plan, but provide some more specific, direct recommendations as they related to Longmont. So we formed an assessment team, and you can see on this slide, the organizations and city departments that were represented on this cross-functional team. In your packet, you have specific names of folks that participated, and many of them, in addition to the senior services staff and the board, are here tonight. Really, what we did is took this as an opportunity to align, again, with the Envision Longmont effort, some of the work that Michelle's group is doing, and really take a look specifically at several items. What we did specifically was utilize a tool that was developed by Dr. Cog, and it was called the Boomer Bond Assessment Tool, and Brad Calvert from Dr. Cog is also in the audience, and him and his team helped us along the way by providing technical assistance and guidance through this process. This tool was really developed to help local governments assess resources, programs, and infrastructure as they relate to older adults. Just as in Longmont, in the region, we are getting older, so this is something that some other communities have done, and this was a great opportunity for us. So we assessed Longmont based in four focus areas, and those are housing, mobility and access, community living, and support services. We were also fortunate to be able to use a facilitator to help us, to help guide us through this process, and that facilitator helped us run the meetings, coordinate information, and really kind of organize responses and develop the recommendations. We were also lucky enough to be able to use the same facilitator that's helping us with the Envision Longmont planning process, and so that was really another opportunity for us to integrate those two processes and really kind of leverage the opportunities from both. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Michelle, and she's going to talk specifically about some of the recommendations from this effort.
Hi, Mayor, members of council, Michelle Waite, I'm the manager of senior services for the city of Longmont. Appreciate the opportunity to be here. The Age Well Plan was originally first adopted by council in 2006. It was updated in 2010 and again in 2015, as Erin mentioned. It was a county-wide initiative at each of those three junctures, with numerous older adults across the county as well as community partners involved. It also had four quadrant areas, and while they didn't exactly match up specifically with the Boomer Bond Assessment, there was a lot of similarity and overlap. Basic needs, personal connection and community involvement, health and wellness, and aging in community are the four areas. This plan is updated every four years. Sherry Leach, who is the executive director of our Boulder County Area Agency on Aging, was on our team and is here tonight. And the update of this plan aligns with her requirements to fulfill in terms of the federal regulations of every four years, and it helps direct the federal funding that comes into our county through the Older Americans Act. So the document that you have in front of you is a combination, really, of the Age Well strategic categories, the Boomer Bond Assessment, and we married that up with survey results from our customers and our community partners, and aligned those as they best fit. And you have in front of you a series of recommendations, but also some priorities. And tonight, Erin and Maureen and I are really just going to hit some of the priorities. The first area is in basic needs, and this area includes housing, in-home services, safety, everyone having enough to eat, access to essential services, financial resources, and of course, transportation. The priorities in these areas for us hit many of these categories, and you will see in your handout and in the PowerPoint. The senior center continuing to remain and develop our role as a focal point of information, referral and services for people over 55 and caregivers is one of the priorities. We do that in conjunction with our area agency on aging. With the growth that Erin has identified, there is no way any one agency can do it all, and we're very fortunate to partner with the AAA in that way. The Village Concept is a model in which many communities are adopting to serve the growing number of older adults, and that's a model that we think is a priority, as well as others, to really look at how to bring other partners in and reaching and serving the older adults in our community. That partnership expansion and strengthening is ongoing, and a sort of new area for us is really looking at case management services for low-income, unsupported older adults. Often referred to as orphaned older adults or unbefriended older adults, but it's really acknowledging we have a growing number of older people in our community who really don't have a significant person in their life, or persons in their life or a support system, and how do we help support them as they age in place. As I mentioned, transportation continues to be a concern and an area of growth, and we are very fortunate to marry up with the multimodal plan as part of the Envision Longmont Comp Plan, and we're able to really cross-pollinate both plans. The things that came out from our team was really looking at supporting the recruitment of volunteer drivers for the various programs that provide volunteer driver support, looking at RTDs, shorter and more direct routes, which really support an aging population, and the continuation of the free fare, which I'm sure you've heard about. The other piece in terms of basic needs was really recognizing our partners within the city who help support this, especially in the areas of personal safety, our partners in public safety, police and fire, and environmental safety concerns, which really are public works and natural resources, as well as others within the organization, support. The second area is personal connections and community involvement. And different in 2015 as compared to 2010 and 2006, this area of personal connection rose to be a number-one issue for older adults, the need to be connected to other people. And so we really recognized that, we did some modification in the plan because of that. So this is really about folks being able to participate and engage. So whether that's engagement at the senior center, whether that's participation in civic life, city meetings, whatever, volunteer opportunities, really strengthening those opportunities and making all kinds of options available, and supporting positive images of aging. Recently, many of you know, our Bi-List DBTita dance group, and one of the dancers said, "Why do we dance at preschools?" They really are more fascinated with our dresses than us. And it was a great opportunity to say, "Because you are an example, a positive image of aging." For those young people that maybe don't have an older person in their life, don't have a grandparent, don't have an older neighbor, you are an example of what a positive image of aging is, so keep dancing." And so we hope that that continues to occur. The third area is health and wellness. So maybe you've heard the phrase, "60 is the new 50, 70 is the new 60." Well, 56 is 56, and that's me. Just the way it is. But I think what that phrase and that approach and philosophy is about is people really want to be healthy and they want to be well, and to that, to them, that means being younger. And so health and wellness continues to be a strong category for people as they age, wherever you are in that spectrum of age. And so we continue to look at the things we have in our community that we are really doing well, live well. Our recreation services, our Ys, the education that we have available. We want to continue to make sure those things happen, and they happen more, and really looking at expanding options for people. We want to also look at those things that really need some specific intervention, maybe eye care, maybe dental care, hearing, some of those other aspects of health that often impact our older adult population. So we continue to look at prevention and early intervention through education, through movement, through screenings, and we're very fortunate at the Longmont Senior Center, as many of you know, to have Longmont United Hospital on site. And so we want to continue to strengthen those partnerships with our healthcare professionals. The fourth category is aging in community. This was a new title in the 2015 Age Well Strategic Plan, and it is really about supporting people where they want to be. As Erin mentioned, we really can't afford not to do this, as a community and as a nation. We have to find ways to support older people in staying where they want to be. It's the most affordable option, it's often the most higher quality of life option as well. So we want to continue to support caregivers, and do the education and support necessary for people who are caring for an older adult. And we also want to look at designing age-friendly neighborhoods and communities, and this was a great opportunity to partner with the Envision Longmont Comprehensive Plan, and really looking at our public works and natural resources and other parts of our city organization responsible for designing age-free, or aging-friendly communities. And you'll see in your category, one of those emphasized the need to be in the public realm, looking at benches, public restrooms, and those kinds of things. And lastly, throughout this process, we were able to capture ideas and include them in the Comp Plan, as I mentioned. And I think we want to continue the partnership that we have been able to make between Erin and myself, between planning and senior services, and throughout the planning processes, to make sure we have that older adult voice heard. Our advisory board has been very proactive in the community. They were very much a part of the Parks and Rec Master Planning Process and others. And at this time, I'd like to introduce Maureen Denning, who is the president of our Senior Citizens Advisory Board.
Good evening, city council mayors, city council members and Mayor Coombs. My name is Maureen Denning, I am the Chair of the Longmont Senior Center Advisory Board, and tonight I am the closer. The last slide is labeled successes. This was produced as a closing exercise for the team. While we discuss things that need changing, someone mentioned, "But what have we done well?" This is what we have done well, it is not inclusive, but rather representative. A few highlights are, a strength of the Longmont Senior Center is the partnerships which have been developed, both internal and in the community. The Friends of the Longmont Senior Center have been very generous to the senior center. They have helped sponsor health and general scholarships, and last resort programs, staff, and more. The senior center has great relationships with Longmont United Hospital, Longmont Meal on Wheels, and the AAA, Boulder County's Area Agency on Aging. We have a strong partnership with the city and our volunteers. There is great participation by our board members. We are visible, we are everywhere, and our board structure is used as a model by other groups. Previous presentations have shown that there is growth in the number of the older adult population. As one of those members, I am here to tell you that we are not going away. The senior center is building and strengthening relationships within the community, but we can't do it all. Do you have any input or direction for recommendations? Thank you.
I do have, I totally agree with the strong social connections, how important that is for aging communities. Because I know when my father retired, you know, he got involved with the schools, and that just kind of rejuvenated his whole life, to be able to go and work with kids and help them with their reading and math, and that was something he looked forward to every day, and he felt like he was contributing. So I think if you have something to wake up for each day, you know, if you read this book called The Blue Zones, the strong theme there was the people that lived along us have very strong social connections, and I think that's an important aspect, so I'm glad that you guys recognize that. You know, another thing I'm concerned about with our seniors is there's so many predators, you know, phone scammers and stuff, and seniors are very vulnerable, because they trust people, and when someone calls and tells them, you know, "Jeez, that last hailstorm, you need a new roof," you know, "and we'll come out and do it." You know, I think we need to, as a city, figure out a way to protect people from being taken advantage of by these scammers somehow. You know, I don't know how to do that, but that's, it's something that's always concerned me, because, you know, when you get older and you're not as mentally sharp, and you're very trusting, and people will try to figure out a way to make you part from your money, and, you know, it's just despicable. Councilmember Santos?
Thank you, Mayor Coombs, well, as liaison for the Senior Citizens Advisory Board, they have talked about that. They've also talked about how putting, there's several monitors within the senior center about, we were talking about scams at the last meeting that I was able to attend, the last meeting that they had, I was in another country. But the last meeting I attended, we went over, they went over the recommendations that are here. And again, almost step by step, going through line by line, to make sure that these were encapsulated, what they got as responses, and what the board thought we as a city needed to incorporate in Envision Longmont. There was talk about, you know, with those scams, putting in City Line and the other sources at the senior center to get out those informations regarding scams. People say, "Oh, by the way, the city's calling, and you owe $250 for your water bill." We don't call. That's, and I always tell folks, if you see something like that, you know, not only let your family know, but others within the community know that may not have that connection. So, job well done, my hat's off to the entire board, you did a very good job. And as Maureen said, this board, I wish could be replicated in other boards. It's very structured, they do a lot of hard work, and again, I commend you for the recommendations you've given us.
Councilmember Peck?
Thank you, Mayor Coombs, I would actually like to thank the entire senior center for, my mom went to senior center activities for years, playing cards, going to meals, going to activities, even having their taxes done, and I am eternally grateful for the services that you offered her. I also would like to tell you that on a recent trip, a transportation lobby trip, I found out that TFI, are you familiar with TFI, the Transportation Infrastructure Finance and Innovation Act, has a new, some new funding called Rise to Wellness that just came out. So there's some new funding, and it is about getting people to their appointments. And while I was listening to this, I was thinking of VIA, which is having a very difficult time with financing and funding. So perhaps that's something that you can use?
Councilmember Christiansen?
I want to thank everybody who participated in this, writing up this report. It's like a list of the, some of the most wonderful people in our community, thank you all. I wanted to ask a question about, under program recommendations for affordable housing, the Golden Girls model, could you tell me something about that, which is a, it says it's boarding, boarding homes?
Okay, so there have been recent. I'm back, thank you. Regarding how many adults can live in a home and various things like that. So recently, city of Boulder has taken that on, Longmont has a number of five, which allows for more shared housing. And actually, we will be having a program Thursday on shared housing, so really trying to help individuals who are interested in reducing their housing costs, looking at appropriate rental agreements without violating the city's code on unrelated adults.
Councilmember Moore?
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. Well, I've always found that aging is better than the alternative, looking forward to it. I just want to comment on the amazing work that comes out of a collaborative effort like this. It's not easy, it takes a lot of effort, it takes commitment. And from what I see here, I can see that it was very well organized and completely inclusive of the whole community, and I really thank you for organizing it that way and tying it also back into our Envision Longmont Plan. our InVision Longmont Plan. I think it's a very competent way to do this whole project. I appreciate it. Thank you.
Councilmember Bagley?
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. I just wanted to say how impressed I am, always, with what you folks do out at the Senior Center and the Senior Advisory Board. While, yes, we do have seniors that are preyed upon by scams and whatnot, oftentimes it's our seniors who, I look at the programs they do, and they seem to have it a hell of a lot more together than other areas of the city that are directed and governed by younger voices. I think it's, what I just heard was very impressive and is, I mean, don't take this the wrong way, but it's in line with what I would expect from the type of activities, events, plans that you folks do. So thank you very much for your effort, and looks great.
Thank you. Thank you.
Councilmember Finley?
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. Thanks for noticing. I also want to thank you for all the great work you do. My dad loves the dances on Thursday nights. I also agree that you need more marketing to let people know all the great programs that you have there. I would surely support that because I know there's a lot of people out there who really could benefit from your programs that don't know anything about them. Every now and then I'll run into somebody who says something, and I say, well, you should go to the Senior Center. They're doing that. And they're always just surprised to hear about it and glad to hear that we have something like that. Keep up the good work, really. You've done a great job here, and you've given us a lot to think about.
Well, my last two sentences, I'm glad you have silver sneakers with recreational service because I think an important thing about aging well is always having that exercise bonus. I mean, you don't need to go out and run 10 Ks, but just walking and moving is real important and, you know, working on, right. But so thanks for recognizing that that's an important aspect of aging gracefully.
Thank you. And Mayor Coombs, members of council, I know that you just don't have enough to read. And so Dawn did hand you a copy of the full Age Well Strategic Plan for the county, as well as the Boulder County Trends Report, which actually has a pretty good summary on aging. So we are certainly not alone. We have many folks we can learn from. And in closing, I just want to say, I have had the privilege of being with the City of Longmont for many, many years, and it's been an absolute blessing. I have an incredible team of coworkers, a fabulous board, and it has been really fabulous to be able to work with Erin and some of my colleagues within the city on this project, and I appreciate that opportunity. Thank you.
Thank you. Why don't we take a five-minute break, because we've been at it for an hour and a half? And it's good to move around after sitting for an hour and a half.
Revenue funds, you have the water construction fund, that is where all the water tap fees is what most people understand it to be. System development fees that go into that fund and they are used to fund projects that expand the system, if you will, to meet the needs of growth. The next one is the water acquisition fund, and that's cash in lieu that developers pay when they come to the city to do their developments. And that's intended to provide for the acquisition of water rights and water supply. The last one is sort of a smaller fund, it's the raw water storage fund that was created when we sold three dams and reservoirs in Rocky Mountain National Park. Oh gee, maybe 25 years ago, quite a while ago, and we've been holding on to that money for reinvestment back into water supply. And so the projected rate impacts, what this table shows going out to 2019 are the rates that have been previously codified by action of council. You did that a couple of years ago, and again, it goes out to 2019, and they are a 9% rate increase annually between 27, 17, 18, and 19. There's three more years left in that five-year plan. The next line down is to show the, where we were and where we were at the 6,000 acre foot level, again, the same rates. The third line down is cash financed at the 10,000 acre foot level. Again, you'll see the differences, and we talked with you about this a little bit back in March, that there are additional rate increases of about 12% above the 9%, if you will, in years 17 and 18. And then the debt financed option, which has increases above the 9% in years 18 and 19. What's interesting about this now is what we're showing you is going all the way out to 2027, okay? And look at the total column on the far, the chart is sort of split because it's long and wide. What you see there is that, a couple of things, the 2014 rate study, we have made adjustments in the capital plan since then up to now. It's a dynamic thing, it's never the same year in and year out, which is why you look at your capital plan every year and adjust it. And so we are actually projecting rate increases now that are lower than what we were anticipating needing to do back in 2014. That's supposed to be good news for you guys, that's the good news part of the thing.
Very good.
So, you know, Michelle's a tough act to follow, so I'm trying to do the best I can here. So the 16, 6,000 acre feet, you can see it's about 152% increase, and again, this is over from 2015 out to 2027, it's a long timeframe. The cash financed, interestingly enough, is one of the lower increases in overall rates. And the reason for that is when you ramp the rates up quicker, you generate revenue for a longer time period, thereby allowing you to not have to debt service as much of your capital plan as you otherwise would have needed to do, okay? Does that make sense to folks, that if you increase your revenues early, you avoid some of that debt? And you'll see that in the 10,000 acre foot cash financed, wherein, you know, it goes up pretty steep in 17 and 18, but then you've got 19, 20, 21, all zeros. And the reason is you've got to get the money early, but then you top out, you don't need to keep increasing rates every year. It's a trade-off, I guess, is the way to look at it. And then lastly, the debt financed one is sort of that midterm. Interesting there, what you see is that the debt finance for the 10,000 windy gap is pretty close to the cash finance for 6,000 acre feet of windy gap. And again, that should make sense to folks, just sort of on the basis that as you stretch those costs out, you're able to mitigate some of that. Uh, boy, and now, so-
So let me ask you just a quick question, when you looked at the debt financed, what did you assume that the bonds would sell for what interest rate?
5%. 5% is what Mike, let me introduce Becky Dorell, she is our rate utilities analyst, she's the brains behind this, and so when I get confused, Becky's going to take over, but she does have a bit of a fever, and so.
Well, that's a pretty conservative assumption.
It is, it is. We will probably, and historically, we have been getting our debt at lower than that, anywhere as low as 3%.
Platt River just got, you know, $170 million worth of JJ bonds at 2.21%.
Right. And they may have a higher rating than even the city, I don't know what their rating is, I don't know if they're AAA, we're double A.
Yeah.
So that really does depend a lot on what your rating is. So you're right, it is conservative, but we always plan conservatively when we're looking at our revenue needs. If we're fortunate to get a better rate, then that's great. What we're showing here is instead of looking at percentage increases in bills, it's the actual monthly bill for an average customer. And of course, who's average? Well, your average if you use about 9,000 gallons a month of water, and that's what this is based on. So you can see our current bills are around $28.30. They top out at about anywhere from $65.88 to $59.90. And again, that cash financed option for the 10,000 has the lower bill as you get out into year 2027. Again, because you win, we, if you increase the rates quicker, you generate the revenue over a longer time period. Questions on that, or does that generally make sense? It's the same information just shown as a monthly bill instead of a percentage increase.
I have a quick question.
Okay. Councilmember Finley.
Thank you, Mayor Combs. So if we get the money cheaper, can we tie our ordinance to whatever is actual numbers rather than speculative numbers?
Mayor Combs and Councilmember Finley, what we typically do, so if I understand your question, when we go for a ballot initiative and a bond issue, we normally put in the bond language the maximum amount that we will sell and add a payback rate. And so we put that right in the ordinance so that the public can see that. And that, that does set the maximum amount that we can sell these bonds for. And if, and again, if they come in lower, what that does is it keeps the money in this fund, so it doesn't go anywhere. It keeps it in the fund, and it should then, let's say we project 5% and we're able to sell at 3, you should generate additional cash in your fund that you then have available to offset future rate increases. Does that make sense? Not at all, yeah, no, 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 certainly not this far out. What I can guarantee is that they'll be different. This is our best shot at giving council some sense over a longer time period, what could happen, okay?
Councilmember Bagley.
Thank you, Mayor Combs, so I just want to, Dale, just to be clear, your cash financed 6,000 or 10,000 acre feet option does not require a bond vote?
Correct.
Okay, I will reserve all additional questions and comments till the end.
I just now want to just remind the council, so we have about a $200 million capital plan between now and 2027. And again, we presented this information, not everyone on council was there at the time that we did that. And here you can see sort of how those anticipated costs are distributed between treatment, distribution, and water resources. And in the first set of time from 15 to 19, and from 2020 to 2027, it's pretty balanced, roughly 100 million over each of those timeframes. You can see, though, that the water resources is more heavily focused earlier, whereas the distribution and treatment costs tend to get greater in the out years. But the interesting thing is it's fairly evenly, you know, distributed between treatment, distribution, and water resources. And frankly, you need all those if you're going to deliver water to a tap reliably. You can't just focus on one of them, you need to focus on all of them. This is the part that, we'll see how much you want to ask about, but what we're trying to show here is the general cash flow. And I think the interesting thing, or the important thing to look at, is when we start issuing additional debt, we need to meet certain debt reserve requirements in order to get favorable ratings. So if you do not meet your debt reserve requirements, your, the rate that they're going to charge you is going to go higher. So what you can see on the, again, just for reference, the 6,000 one on cash financed, 2018, we get a little low on our debt ratio, but we recover very quickly back up over 2. Our goal is 1.6 in that particular layout. And again, it just shows you the ending fund balances. We ran these models in order to try to get apples-to-apples comparison between the 2014 rate study, the 6,000, and the 10,000 two options, so you can understand those. So here's 10,000 cash financed. Again, we don't have any issue meeting our fund reserve or our target reserves for debt financing. Our ending fund balances stay pretty healthy throughout the time period. They do drop down out in 2027, because again, that's a fairly big capital plan year, but it works. So again, this is sort of show that the previous numbers that we showed you with regards to the rate increases get you through this time period. And similarly, on the 10,000 acre foot with the debt finance option, we still have that issue out in year 2018, but we again, we recover as we go through the planning period. So all these numbers would need to be refined. If the council's prerogative and direction is to go more towards a debt financing model, we would have to do more work on this in order to make sure that we're going to meet those target reserves in each of those years. So, we're to the point of some questions for council, and again, tonight, you don't necessarily need to give us direction on anything if you don't want to. The first question we have, though, is whether you're leaning towards debt issuance for windy gap or cash. And the reason we're asking that question is that, two purposes, one is if you're leaning towards debt, we would anticipate that that election would, could be next year, and would likely need to be next year, in 2017. And so we wouldn't need to do anything immediate other than start the discussion in the community on the whys and what we're trying to accomplish. So that's one thing. On the other hand, if you're leaning towards the cash option, the thing we need to know then is as we're putting together the 2017 budget, because we would want to approve the ordinances to increase the rates starting in January of 2017. It's all assumed those rate increases would start in January of 17, okay? So if you, if you have a sense of that, tell us that tonight. If you don't, if, let's say you're, you still need more information. If you can sort of share with us the types of information that would help you to arrive at that place where you can give us direction between debt or cash, that would be helpful for us to know as well. We put in your packet tonight the alternative revenues. We did not put marijuana dispensaries in there, though, we didn't think of those. But we do have all the, all the alternative revenues that we talked with you about maybe a year and a half or so ago. And so we wanted to remind you of that. If there is anything in there that sort of whets your appetite, or if you want any additional information on any of those alternatives, feel free to tell us that as well. Next item is cash in lieu. The question there really is, is right now, we have a policy whereby we calculate and determine the cash in lieu level for the city. It is largely driven by the cost of new projects, one of which is the Windy Gap Fermi project. I believe one of the members of the water board mentioned on the 22nd that our numbers are lower than some surrounding cities, and so we just wanted to ask you that question. Staff is not recommending one way or another whether we change it, and frankly, we're, my preference is not to go up and down on that particular thing, because that really sends conflicting messages out to people on what we're trying to do. But again, if you want to give us direction, what I would say is we could go back and reevaluate and reanalyze that and come back with you. The last thing is a windy gap firming surcharge. You know, the current windy gap project has a surcharge on every tap that's issued, and it's about $1,500 or so per single-family equivalent. The question for council is that, that particular surcharge is going to sunset at the end of 2017 when the final project is paid off. Question for council, and again, if you're not ready tonight, you don't have to, but would you be interested in staff doing some analysis around a potential surcharge on new taps for the Windy Gap Fermi project? Again, it's a way to defer some of those costs if you're interested in that. So with that, I'm going to end my presentation. If there's any questions, either Becky or I can respond to those and take whatever direction council has.
Well, you know, I appreciate, you know, the fact that nobody knows what interest rates are going to do, and it's kind of a guess estimate. But perhaps, you know, my feelings are, when I, when I look at this thing, I'd lean towards debt financing, except for I'm concerned about the 2017 to 21%, you know, for some people, I'm not concerned for, you know, myself, because I think we, water's cheap compared to other things that we, but, you know, we really don't know. Let's say we go out for bond and we put in the bond language that we'll only debt finance if we get bonds at, say, 3.5%. And then that will force us into cash financing, because maybe, you know, maybe there's a sweet spot that's, that 5% is not the right answer, maybe, you know, when the interest rate is that high, we, it doesn't make sense to debt finance when, because then we'll only suffer for a couple of years, and after that, we're done with it. It's like buying a car, you know, you don't want to buy a car at high interest rates with, you can just pay cash and be done with it, because you save all that interest, and it's the same kind of thing here. So maybe, I'm not against debt financing, but I would, if I went out to vote for the people, I would put in a lower, more aggressive interest rate as opposed to 5%. And if we don't get it, then it forces us to cash finance anyway.
And Mayor, if I could add to that, that's something that we could certainly analyze as we, and we would come back to you with some different options, and we'd really defer that issue to the experts like Jim Benir and Dee Wiser, not Dale Radamaker, to give you advice on that. Those folks understand the market a heck of a lot better than I do. One thing I did want to remind council that I forgot to say earlier is that the sub-district up at Northern is just initiating their own financial alternatives analysis for the Windy Gap Fermi project. They expect to have that study in their hand later this fall. And so we could marry these two things up at that time and come back to you also with the district debt finance or district finance option along with a city finance option. So you don't have to make the call on that tonight. We want you to let, we want to let you know sort of the timeframe, though, on when we expect to get that additional information from the district.
Councilmember Bagley.
Thank you, Mayor Combs, first of all, if you were on council, what would you do for the finance option? It's math and water, which you happen to be an expert in both, so, what, I mean-
Well, seeing what I see, that's a great question, and I'll venture a guess, even though my wisdom tells me not to. And I do this on my own finances at home. If I can afford to pay cash, I pay cash.
Can we afford to pay cash?
Well, I could ask three different customers and probably get different answers. I do believe when you look at the long run, it's the cheapest option. And so it comes to, and I actually, you know, I'll get skewered for saying this too. You know, Longmont's rates are very low compared to folks around us. Our customers, however, are used to that, and many of them rely on that for their month-to-month bill making. And so, you know, I think it's a difficult choice, but again, if I felt we could do it with cash, I would always go that route.
So, so what was the, so originally, staff came back with the recommendation of, the water board said 10, staff had looked at it and said 6,000 acre feet, but I look at this kind of as a queuing problem. 6,000, but there was a range originally presented that we might need, what was that range again?
The range was from 6 to 10.
6 to 10, but I thought it was a little higher than 10, I thought it went as high as-
Previously, we were in as high as 12.
High as 12, right. So I look at it as, I still think 10,000 is the way to go, because at some point, somebody had to build Button Rock before me and my family came to this town, and I'm grateful for the forefathers of Longmont, who paid the bill to make sure that we could have low water rates and take showers and drink out of our fountains and all that kind of stuff. So I think that doing it for the next generation is just kind of, it's not even paying it forward, it's paying back what somebody already paid forward. I am concerned, I would like staff, and again, I'm just one of seven, but I think it would be important to address some type of solution for people who are elderly, poor, et cetera, that would enable them to spread out. I mean, if they meet a certain criteria, if there's 10% of the community that could, instead of getting hit with those 20% 2017, 2018 water rate increases, maybe an option to extend it over four or five years. So not, I mean, I know that most of us would front-load, but those who have a cash flow issue might be able to extend it. Just some type of solution that I think that might be helpful. I also think that it's not so much a question as concerns, and, and this goes back to Mr. May, Eugene. So we're going to be talking about the ordinance about not selling water to oil and gas. We're also going to be talking about no urban development. Two, two things that I'd like to see in that ordinance, one is currently it's written to say something to the effect of no sale to oil and gas, or city staff won't consider it unless council approves it. I think the whole point is to force it to a point where the public would be involved in the conversation, having a first and second ordinance, or first and second reading. So if we want to sell to oil and gas, it would require us to go through the painful process of having, you know, public engaged versus just council in the future going, oh, okay, what were you going to say?
I have to interrupt you, Mayor Pro Tim Bagley, but we are bringing back that consideration on the prohibition of water leases in that area. It did go to the water board yesterday, it will be coming to you at your May 3 meeting. That is a study session for you to look at the draft ordinance, look at that, tell us whether we got a lot, you know, got things right. Did we get the area right, did we have the restrictions correct, and those kinds of things. So May 3, that's coming to you as well.
Right, and I'm just giving you a kind of, I'm getting a little ahead of us, but what I'm saying is that in the oil and gas saying, the section in there that says you won't consider it unless council says to consider it, I'd just remove the unless council says to consider it, and then that way council has to change the ordinance, and we have to have a first and second reading, and the public can participate. And then as far as the no urban development, I would like to see it at least changed so that it says, right now, it says south of 66, north of 52, and east of 25. I'd like to see it, I'd like to see it say, we won't sell to any city or government entity that has annexed anything within that area. Because I don't want to be in a situation with the Kono, Firestone, Mead, whatever, where all of a sudden, where, oh, no, 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 I'm going to buy the water and we're going to use it to the east of I-25, but we're going to use our water to the west of I-25.
Mayor Pro Tim Bagley, it does say that.
Okay, alright.
You're on to something there.
Alright, good.
It's within that area, or any municipality or water district wholly or partially contained within that area.
Awesome. And then I think that, because I think that, I think, so this is actually leading up to the first question, do I lean towards financing or cash? I'm leaning towards cash. We would need, with the caveat that we come up with a way to help and assist our poorest members of our community. And then, but what you're going, but that's, that is based on a purely analytical financial perspective. And I think that people who hear that, if council votes that way, they might think, oh, my gosh, what are you trying to do? You're trying to, you know, take the water and get around it and sell the oil and gas companies, you're trying to, you know, shenanigans, shenanigans. So I think that if we're going to do that, we need to address these other issues.
Right. And if I could also, real quickly, the, one thing council could direct us on as well is on the, on the customer satisfaction survey, you have the opportunity for, to ask some policy questions. One of the policy questions you could ask is, tell us how you'd prefer to finance that. And I know Regal's working on that right now, and well, that'll be one of several questions, but you'll probably see that as one of the potential policy questions as well.
Councilmember Christensen.
Several things, thank you for that survey, that, I think that's a good idea, because then people have some input before, other than just coming to city council and writing letters of outrage to the newspaper. I have a question, but then I'd like to voice my opinions on how I lean. But under the financial considerations section, you are talking about FEMA, and we don't know what we're getting from FEMA. And when will we know, and as you say, that might need, we might need to have another bond for that. So that's a big, that's a big question, and, well, so I'd like to know, first of all, when might we know, do you think, maybe?
Mayor Combs and Councilmember Christensen, yeah, we did reference the uncertainty that we still have with regards to the, it's the FEMA PAP project for the recovery at Button Rock Reservoir to remove the, all the gravel and debris that got into the reservoir. We have submitted an alternative project to FEMA to invest, it's about $5 million, in primarily in the Windy Gap Fermi project, but also in acquisition of water rights and some more, also with Union Reservoir Pump Act. So FEMA is supposed to tell us this week. We submitted that to them over a year ago. They are struggling, and if you can, I can appreciate this, that FEMA does not understand Colorado water law, and they don't understand this whole idea of it being a property right and those kinds of things, and so it's new for them. Harold and I just met with the state of Colorado folks today. They are willing to work with us to try to inform and help FEMA to get to that understanding. So we should know it soon. We will know it before we're having to make the call on which option to go with, on financing.
Okay, so for that reason, well, I'm wondering, I think all of us understand from our own personal finances, as you were just talking about.
I don't think you're coming over the-
You have to shut your mic, so someone else is going to keep.
Yeah. Everybody's going to have to turn off their mic, because you turned yours off.
Do I turn it off too?
No, now you're good.
I can hear you.
Sorry. I should have done it in a different order, but I wanted- I should have done it in a different order, but I wanted to know that first. I, my leaning is toward, as you were saying, because of personal finances and other direction, other things, I, I would strongly lean toward financing it by cash, because over the long term, it's, it costs much more to finance it by debt. You're paying off bondholders and things like that, and it takes more time, and you're dealing with more expensive money. And secondly, it makes us more vulnerable and less reliant, because we have a, I'm very concerned about the debt service overload and, and getting into more, I don't want to carry this stuff on for our children. I, I want it, it's painful to do right now, but it's the right thing to do, it seems to me, in the long, in the, in the short and long term, is to finance it by cash if we can. We're still lacking $57 million for flood recovery, so I want to, I want that to be the priority.
Councilmember Peck.
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. I also am leaning toward the, the cash, but I would also like you to do a windy gap surcharge that you mentioned to see what that would be, if we can increase that or what that would look like. And again, I, I am also concerned about the debt overload. If we keep, if we bond, we bond for them all, we're going to bond for this if we don't do the cash, plus the 57 million for, that's way too much to put on the next generation or so. So, thank you.
Councilmember Santos.
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. Well, I, I agree with that sentiment to, to a point, but we're also doing this for the future.
Yeah.
So I, I get the idea that debt overload has some members of council concerned, but again, whether you bond for water or bond for next slide or what have you, it is to the greater future. So I, I would lean also towards the cash. I would like to know a little bit more about the windy gap firming surcharge as well. I don't have it on the screen, I have it on the papers. I'd also be interested in, in hearing about the, the alternate revenues as far as the raw water, the raw water storage, storage. I'd like to know, how much is in there currently from the sale of those dams back 25 years ago?
Mayor Coombs and Councilmember Santos, it's about $400,000.
But it's something. So, I mean, if there are funds within the water area of the city, that can be used for cash, those, those should be explored. But again, I like the cash option. As Councilmember Bagley said, we do need to look out for those individuals that are less, less fortunate and have some sort of way to smooth that a little bit over, for them, a little bit over time. But I, again, seeing this and as, it's been mentioned, we mentioned this last time, not to, to have a good water source for the next 20 to 20, 25 years into the future. So when my girls are a little bit older and they're looking to move here with their families, which I still can't believe I keep, keep saying that, that...
It gets easier over time.
I'm sure it does. You have one, you have several in college, minor in elementary school. But again, to have a, a, a great water system that we currently have for them in the future, that's what I'm looking forward to.
Councilmember Moore.
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. So hypothetical question here, what, we have, we've got some projections through 2027. Do you have a number that the all-in, what the end point cost at 2027 is for both the cash option and the debt option, for how much money goes out? So how much more does a bond cost us?
Mayor Coombs, Councilmember Moore, on page 31 of your packet, there is a comparison of the costs of debt financing, the entire project versus cash financing. So that, that would be the life of the bond, the 20-year life, which is a little...
I just wanted to get it on TV.
So, so the, the total cost of cash financing would be $47 million. The projected actual cost of debt financing, only the portion of the project cost that is incremental to what we had already programmed to cash finance at 6,000 acre feet, is 57 million, 57.2 million. And if we look at the net present value of that, it's, it's 54.2 million in today's dollars.
Thank you.
And the, and the projected cost of debt financing, the entire amount is 71.8.
So I guess I'm a cash kind of guy myself. If I can buy it with cash, I do, just like our loan, our director said. But I would also like to explore the cash in lieu. Our current cash in lieu is, I think, 11,000 something an acre foot.
Correct.
Where if you compare it to like Brumfield, I believe there are like $35,000 an acre foot. So I think there's some headway there that we can make as far as maybe helping them slow down those rates. The windy cap surcharge seems like something that we should keep, we should look at keeping that as well. And just as clarification, this is a revenue, these would be revenue bonds if we did finance, so there's no, no impact on our total debt capacity as a city.
Yeah, they're issued as revenue bonds against the water utility.
Okay. So that being said, I would like to see the cash option and potentially even a, a bond calculation at more like 3.5%. See what that comes out to.
Councilmember Finley.
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. I agree with what he said. I, cash is always better than debt. Learned that in my own life. I do think the raw water storage money we've been keeping forever, we ought to throw in there. I think we ought to keep the surcharge. I think we ought to look at all the ways possible to do the, do it without a bond and still make it affordable for our citizens. I find it rather ironic that the two things we're talking about tonight both increase our, our, our city bill, basically, and it's one thing that I absolutely hate, and yet I keep having to do it. And it just drives me crazy, because there are people who cannot afford it. And I really hope that, that when we do it, as Councilmember Bag, or Mayor Pro-Tam Bagley said, that we think of a way to help those people who really can't afford it. You know, for them, it's the difference between buying perhaps a medication and paying their city bill, and that's just not right. So we really need to look at that, too.
If, if I could just interject, you know, we, we have in the water utility, the, the program that I think we're just getting underway with this year to try to offset the bill for lower-income folks. We can certainly look at that, we can look to see if we can expand it, or maybe give some options to that to, to help folks through this change as well, so.
So can I ask a question about charging water for municipal operations? You know, that's kind of like robbing one money out of another bucket, because it takes money out of then the...
General fund.
General fund. But how would that affect the, I mean, on, on one hand, I always like, you know, systems where people really know what the real cost is, you know, like the pool or golf courses, you know what the real cost is, because sometimes they'll figure out, you know, ways to conserve once they're really paying the real bill. So maybe it's not a bad thing, but is, I know this is one of the ongoing revenue things that you tagged, so how would that help our bottom line if we did that?
So, Mayor Coombs, you know, we can relook at all those numbers, but suffice it to say, I think it was a couple percentage points of rate for each $400,000.
Okay.
The numbers are in there, but what I do know, and Jim's looking at me, is that the general fund isn't exactly flush with money either. You know, whereas I certainly appreciate people understanding the full cost of certain things. On the other hand, it, it is absolutely robbing Peter to pay Paul.
It shifts the conversation from a rate increase in the water side to evaluating what we're doing in the general fund side and, and what we're going to fund. It just, that conversation moves there, and we have to look at those pieces, which if that's council, council's direction, we can do that. Just a different conversation dealing with the same dollar amount, essentially.
And, you know, I guess I'm, I've always been a cash guy. I've never bought in a car, you know, a new car unless I paid cash for it, because if I didn't have the money to pay cash for it, I bought a used car.
That's why I ride the bike.
Yeah, that's why I ride a bike. But, you know, there is, you know, I still wouldn't want to totally rule out it tonight of debt financing, because, you know, we could end up getting bonds at 2%. I mean, who knows?
But I will say to that, Mayor Coombs, is that the, even the, the 10,000 acre foot cash plan does envision future bonds for some of the other aspects of the water utility. And so it is a case of doing some of both, because we can't go pure cash and get $200 million over this timeframe. So there, there is still a bonding component, and I agree with you wholeheartedly. If, if you can get relatively cheap money, you probably need to have a mixture of that. I'm, I'm, when asked, I'm speaking just to this windy gap issue. If we can do it with cash and get through it over these next two years, that I, especially as I saw the, the longer-term rate impacts and bill impacts, made it easier for me to look at it.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Peck.
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. Just to reiterate what you said, Dale, we are looking at future bonding in 2020 for that Nelson Flanders water treatment plant, so we are still looking at future bonding. But referring to the ordinance, I'm kind of curious, is there a draft of that someplace that I haven't seen or that?
So Mayor Coombs and Councilmember Peck, the, the draft of it has gone to the water board. They acted on it and made their recommendation, which generally agreed with what the staff had brought forward. I don't know who our liaison is right now. I wasn't at the meeting yesterday.
Jim.
Councilmember Moore. So I was at the meeting on Monday. I've had general conversations over the months with people about things that we can put in. Council, or Mayor Pro-Tam Bagley initially brought up the issue about having areas that we would prohibit sail in and those kinds of things. So I know it's out there, but it's, it's gone to the water board.
Could I just suggest that, referring specifically to the gas and oil not to sell but/or lease? Haven't other cities gotten in trouble with this, Fort Lupton, for selling or leasing water to gas and oil? And, and that would have to refer to the legal department, I don't...
I think the most recent issue was the issue in Boulder, where they sold it for agricultural use, but then that person was actually averting it to sell for use of oil and gas.
That was, that was...
Okay. I, I would still like to consider not leasing it also to gas and oil.
And again, without, so Bay 3rd, we're going to talk about that in detail, but I do believe that caveat is in there as well.
Great, thank you.
Councilmember Bagley.
Uh, one, I, I just, in case, I think we've already got six out of seven, but just to throw my hat in the ring, I'm also, I'm all for maintaining at least whatever the windy gap firming surcharge is now. Calling it something else and keeping that there when people are already used to paying will be easier to swallow than increasing rates. And if we're already increasing rates, lessen the blow. So I guess that, I guess what I'm hearing is that everybody likes the cash, cash option, but I also think we should have you use your experience to pay for the project, and your expertise and experience to pay for the project as cheaply as possible while maintaining our ability to go to the public for bonding on future city projects.
Agreed.
That's it.
Okay. Councilmember Santos.
Almost it. So whatever was sent to the water board needs to go to all seven of us. So we all can see what the water board, I know the minutes and everything else hasn't been, they haven't been approved yet, but whatever was sent to water board, can that be sent to the council?
So to clarify, it will, that packet's coming out next Tuesday. Are you asking that we send it, the water board packet, to all council ahead of next week's packet coming out?
They had their meeting, correct?
Yesterday.
So let's, I mean...
You can send the water board packet to all of you.
Send the water board packet, yeah.
Will do.
Okay.
Thank you. I, I believe, council, you gave us a lot of good things to work on, and I appreciate it. And again, this fall is when Northern will have their study done. We will keep working on this. Right now, we're going to head towards, I'm just going to recap, we're going to head towards a, a cash financing option and do a lot of work around that as part of the 2017 budget. We are going to look at the windy gap surcharge and placing a similar kind of surcharge onto the firming project going forward. Again, that'll come back to you for votes in the form of ordinances. The alternative revenues, a couple of you talked about that, but I don't have a strong sense that everybody's saying go hog wild and start looking at that. If you change your mind, let us know. And on cash in lieu, you know, the water board looks at that quarterly, and so if there is something that council periodically wants to have looked at, you can certainly send that direction as well to the, to the water board. And with that, I'm going to...
Councilmember Santos, you saw...
Dale, I know you, you said it, but none of us actually talked about it, but I would like to see what Northern's doing. Definitely would like to see, yes. So I guess we're all in agreement with that to see what Northern, no one touched on it, but you did. So just nods of heads of, yeah, we'd like to see what, what they're doing.
You know, this one slide called the residential rate competitiveness, I think that's an important slide for our customers to see just how Longmont is stacking up against all these other cities. And we're clearly way ahead of all the other communities, and I think that's an important message to get out to, to the public.
Correct.
Sorry.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Mayor, the next item is Pay as You Throw and Compost Implementation and Rate Plan, and Bob Allen is here to present.
Awesome. And here comes the closer for the night.
Mayor and council, Bob Allen, Operations, Public Works and Natural Resources. We were here tonight to seek your direction on the potential for ordinances here this next month in composting and pay-as-you-throw programs. We have in your packet, an example ordinance or an ordinance actually using a phase-in pricing scheme. You have two ordinances in, in the, two draft ordinances, I should say, in the packet. One is for pay-as-you-throw, the other one is for composting. As we've said before, they're independent of each other, so they don't, one can be approved or passed and, and the other one not. They both can go whatever you choose to do or direct us. Either way, we have, and I, if you've looked at them in detail, you'll see that we've added in the composting ordinance, a fee for somebody who would enter into that program voluntarily but abandon it after just a few months. And the purpose for that fee is to avoid the costly practice of only signing up for that program for the summer months and not paying for it for the full year, which is how the pricing was really derived.
Good catch.
So the, the, no phase-in approach, you've already seen the, I think, the pricing schematic for that. Lisa Skoomat's presented that to you a few weeks ago, and the rates are in the $24 for the 96-gallon container, $1,290 for the 48, and $6.50 for the 24-gallon. And then the multifamily would continue to reflect the price into the 48-gallon, and the extra containers would continue to reflect the 90% cost of the full subscription. The other option would be a two-year pay-as-you-throw phase-in program, which was the draft that was included in your packet, and this has a lower rate schematic for 2017 compared to the one you saw from... And this has a lower rate schematic for 2017 compared to the one you saw from Sarah or Lisa Skoomatz back a few weeks ago. And then higher rates to recover those costs in 2018.
Yeah. Councilmember Bagley.
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. I'm sorry to interrupt, but since we're on this here, we, I think it's a we, are hearing that there's a misconception or misunderstanding in the community that these rate increases are directly related or correlated with council's decision to implement a composting program. In other words, trash users are going to subsidize the composting. So you just said, so the question is, and I just want to reiterate it, why are the current rates increasing? Okay, so even the 48 gallon bin is going up a little bit, right? The 96 gallon bin is going up four bucks. Why is it increasing? And what assurances are there that we are not using trash subscribers to subsidize composting?
Mayor Coombs, Mayor Pro Tim Bagley, the rates, the pay as you throw rates were set entirely independently of the composting rates. And if you choose to only have a new pay as you throw program and not composting, they are independent and vice versa. If you want to go with composting and not change the pay as you throw program, that also would be independent of the rates that are proposed in these slides. So you can go either direction. You can do both, you can do either or. They aren't linked in any way. The rate structure is a reset of the current structure to achieve pay as you throw, which influences consumer behavior. So it's an entire reset based on what we would have to do to recover the cost to run the program and have that near 80% spread between the three different services.
You know, one thing I should point out, you know, we just got our Western bill and they said that because of landfill, their tipping fees increased too. And they increased by 4%, but they then, you know, passed on a 6% increase. So, you know, tipping fees are increasing. So we would have had, you know, an increase, no, regardless of whether you went to a pay as you throw, if people don't understand that, but tipping fees are going up because we filled, the Larimer landfill is filled up, and now all that trash is going to our landfill, and that's going to fill up ours faster too. Yeah. Yeah, go ahead. Councilmember Finley.
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. That is kind of what I want to get to. Just a yes or no answer, would we have been increasing rates at our current level, the way we do things now? Would we be increasing the trash rates anyway?
Yes.
Okay. That's what people need to hear. They were going to go up anyway. Now we're just trying to incentivize people to throw away less and, and recycle more with this program, right?
Mayor and council, that's correct. Rates were, would have, had to have been looked at and adjusted anyway. To clarify though, this is a reset of the entire program and the entire structure. So it doesn't trace back directly to the rates we currently have. Now, the, the program that's proposed here, certainly if we had fewer cost liabilities, like lower fees on the landfill, or if we had more reserves, then these probably would have shifted down lower. They're intended just to recover the costs that we anticipate moving forward and with the current reserves we have.
Councilmember Christensen.
I would also like to point out that this isn't just to try to make people change their behavior. This is actually much more fair system because there's now a 24 gallon, $6.50 trash can for people who have previously been subsidizing the 96 gallon ones. And anyway, this is a, it's an issue of fairness too. The, the rates between these three containers now as opposed to the previous two containers are much more fair, and that's where we want to go in the future. This puts us on a level with every other service we have where we pay for what we use.
Yeah. It's what we do with electricity, it's what we do with water, why shouldn't we do it with trash? Okay, go ahead. Councilmember Santos.
The screen is too small, I can't see it. Thank you, Mayor Coombs. Very good points, Councilmember Christensen. Exactly. This is, and as you said, Bob, this is a reset of the entire system. This isn't one that, well, one we were going to have to raise rates regardless. We do have insurance, we have payroll, we have O and M of facilities, we have to buy new containers all, quite often. But also, if you're throwing away more, you probably should be paying more. I have a 96 gallon. I'm going to have a 96 gallon while I have two little girls in my household for quite some time. But, you know, for those that are perhaps on their own or a couple that don't throw away as much, we have now two options, 48 and then the, well, it should just pass a virtual 24, which I was explaining to somebody today, well, how does that work? Is every two weeks they pick that one up? So, it's not a weekly thing, but every two weeks. So you pay 660 or 650. So, you know, that's quite the reduction from a 96 to, from 96 or a 48 to that virtual 24.
Okay, you're allowed to continue, Bob. Sorry about all the interruptions.
If, if council will remember when we had the discussion on this item, another point that you all considered was actually what the spread looked like. So there was one, there was one slide that talked about an 80% spread, and there was another one that talked about.
65.
65, there were different ranges. And this actually reflects the direction that you all gave us in that conversation.
Right, which was the 80% spread.
Had you have changed the spread, those numbers would have been different too.
Right, right.
And that reset of this, this process.
Right, yes.
And this was also the recommended by the consultant.
Right.
Schematic, because it's the most standard and has the impacts that Councilmember Christensen pointed out.
Right, okay.
Other fees in these drafts that you have, the voluntary composting would be at 660 a month. There wouldn't be any changes, at least any that we're proposing to the dumpster and large item, the dumpster rental and the large item costs. We are proposing in the packet, $10 increases per service for non-customer, non-resident rates at the waste diversion center. We have a lot of traffic, a lot of volume at that facility. We have the lowest rates, I would say, in town, but it's really in state. And so it's very attractive for landscape companies working in Boulder, Loveland, other places to travel to our facility to, to dispose of waste at our fees. So this will either slow down some of that traffic or put more money into our program and help us keep that site.
Councilmember Bagley.
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. Just jumping in because again, it's right here. So that, that voluntary composting of $6.66, or $6.60 per month, that no additional city revenues or revenues from other areas will be utilized. That $6.60, it pays for their composting. They don't need to be subsidized by any other general fund area, other monies, nothing, correct?
Mayor Coombs and Mayor Pro Tim Bagley, that is correct. That is independent of the rate schematic for the pay as you throw program. And if you choose to do only the composting program, this is the only fee that would be needed to make that program viable. It would not need to be subsidized by any other program in the city.
If it didn't cover the cost, we would be back in front of council saying, we can't do it. It's not working, we need to raise the cost.
The other fee that we have that is not proposed to change is our waste management fee. That fee is, and this is a slide from five or six years ago, so some of you may recall. The waste management fee funds sanitation for city facilities, government-related programs. It does our Main Street trash and recycle program, informational, educational programs. Some of the administrative transfer fee, at least at one time, it paid for some of that from the program back into the enterprise services provided by the city back to these funds. And then it's also been used for emergencies, disasters, and for our forestry program. So when forestry brings trees from city property to be ground at our waste diversion center, this fee pays for that. Unfortunately, this fee has not paid for all of the emergencies and disasters in the city in recent years. So that has come from fund, from the reserves in the fund. So that, this slide, I tried to make this so that it wasn't terribly confusing, but the city has paid from the sanitation fund currently 1.35 million for flood recovery. About 800,000 of that, if you recall, was used for debris removal throughout the city. We've had 300,000 of that reimbursed so far. We don't know if we'll get more. Ultimately, we're planning on an additional 3.55 million for restoring the landfill property along the river, or maybe more appropriately said, the, the river along our landfill property so the two stay separate. And we're hoping once again to see reimbursements from that. We still expect to have a total outlay from the flood and the, the repair to the river of somewhere in the .6 to 1.5 million dollar range on this fund. And we do have, you know, a current outlay that has not been reimbursed. So this is, this is an additional cost to the fund that benefited the community. And other things that, that we have paid for, there are smaller things or things like pickup of illegally dumped trash in the city. When we have branch collection programs and we've had big snowstorms, we've had to dip into our reserves to also pay for, for some of those. So those are certainly things you can decide not to use the sanitation fund for any longer, but you would scramble to find other ways to fund those programs, which have been, I think in, in a lot of the community's opinions, very beneficial to the city, though unexpected and certainly at higher levels than what we had hoped for. So if, if we have approval to move forward with, with a composting program, we'll certainly have to have an outreach component to that. We have not started planning that yet. We've actually really tried to move through this with incurring the least possible cost to the fund to get us to this point. So that if you decide not to move forward, we haven't invested a lot into this. But depending on the direction you give tonight, if we do move forward with programs, or at least with preparing ordinances for you to consider here in the near future, then we'll have to move forward with an outreach program to, to kind of hit, I think, the target numbers for composting that we were expecting. And we'd love any ideas that you have. Certainly feel free to approach us or email us or call us or give us your thoughts, and we'll accept them community-wide, most certainly. But any ideas we can hear from others on how we can get more involved in this program would be helpful to us. Ultimately, what I'd like to do if we have a composting program is to start trying to get folks signing up and interested in that as soon as possible, so that we can make the plans for the equipment that we need. Overall implementation, if we move forward with composting, we would want to order equipment, you know, as soon as possible, in part because it takes a while for that to be delivered and, and start planning the program around the needs for serving our customers. The one challenge we would face is we're planning initially on about a 25% customer sign up for composting. If we have, and because this is an independent cost from the other program, if we have signups that, that occur after that program gets started, and they occur very rapidly and we can't serve those until we buy another unit of equipment, we may have to waitlist customers or find some innovative ways to maybe reroute or use maybe a Fridays where we don't do collections, maybe use that to pick up some of those customers. So to have a pay as you go program through composting would, would cause maybe a little bit of delay in providing that service once we hit, you know, these 25% stages in the program. And why I say 25% is that we can deliver the entire city with four trucks. We start with one truck, we can do that 25%, but we need enough signups to move into that next level.
Okay.
And, and frankly, I hope we get some complaints, only in that that means our program is successful and we're probably going to be able to move it more quickly. Multifamily challenges, we haven't talked a lot about that. Providing composting and the full range of pay as you throw services to multifamily will be very challenging. There are a lot of restrictions on the use of small polycarts around multifamily units. A lot of the facilities don't have landings for extra equipment or dumpsters to provide that service. So we have added a provision in, in both those ordinances that would allow us to do that if we can find a way to do that. But I can't tonight say that we have a plan for how we would do that, considering the diversity of all that we face out there with multifamily.
Okay.
But we will try. And I expect we will probably have some complaints in that area as well. That may be the next or the future generation of, certainly of composting, is finding ways and giving feedback to owners of multifamily units on how they can, you know, whatever HOA or ordinances they have for their local, local community, to have those maybe align a little bit better with our sanitation program so that we can make those, that equipment or those containers available on their property. Many of them would prohibit that today. And this is my last slide. This was a slide we presented to you last year. This was just from that EPA composting report from 2010, showing that average participation nationally, considering all mandatory voluntary programs, is in that 35 to 40% range. Average cost per household in 2010 was 540. The average charge was 770. So we are, we set as that concept level estimate of somewhere in the $6 range, and I think we've come pretty close to that. And average collection, 25 to 30 pounds, total of which, 7 to 9 pounds is food waste, meaning that the majority of that waste is yard waste and in the summer months. So tonight, we certainly would like direction from you if you so choose to give us direction. Options, once again, we can only go with a pay as you throw program if that's what you choose. We could move to composting only if you choose that, or we can do both. We can not change any of the program and stay with the current program. And if directed, we would come back in May, probably May 10th with ordinances for one or all programs.
Well, I personally appreciate all the good work that you've done. You know, I, I'm heavily in favor of the pay as you throw program that we've, with the 80% and also the composting. I think that they're both good moves. You know, it's, as elected leaders, it's hard to predict the future, but we do know one thing, landfills are filling up, and our tipping costs that we have right now are just going to increase in the future. And so if we don't address this problem, when we have an opportunity to do it now, I think we're, we're doing a disservice. So sometimes it's hard to do something that's going to increase fees, you know, in the near term, but we have to look at, make decisions based on long-term where we think. And, you know, like Larimer County is, you know, they filled up, and now Fort Collins is paying huge fees to haul their trash, you know, down here. So I, I like the step up program. I think that that's what we should support. I hope everybody agrees with me, but I'll let everybody weigh in. And I appreciate all the great work that you've done on this. It's a very complex issue, and I think you've done a very good job of analyzing it and presenting it to us. presenting it to us. Councilmember Bagley.
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. I kind of look at this as kind of an update. I, I mean, I feel that, I mean, which I really appreciate. Sounds like progress is going well, but I think that I, nothing has changed. I've just heard, what I heard tonight, just continues to reinforce the decision I, I helped make, I think, which was, I think we should move forward with pay-as-you-throw and composting. Do I regret doing it at the same time, to avoid some confusion? Yeah, but too late, and for a penny, and for a pound. So I think we should continue and, and implement both programs, and take it to the next step.
Councilmember Moore.
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. Yeah, I would say that the, the two-year implementation plan makes some sense, and at the same time, I don't, I mean, I think we're into it for both the composting and the pay-as-you-throw at this point. Because it, the composting is a separate program, we're not really adding a new required city service. It's an optional service, and I think that's, that's more palatable to most people. And quite frankly, I think I'm going to get a break-even point when I get composting in my virtual 48. So I think, we have to, that's one of the things we could do, as far as our marketing campaigns, to point out, if you can, if you can fit into that container, that you can reduce your trash bill. One of the other things that we might consider, as far as marketing, maybe some sort of a video on our website that says why this kind of composting works, how it works, why it's beneficial to our long-term outlook on the community when we look out 20, 30 years, as far as being able to still take our trash to the landfill, and what are we going to do with it if we can't? You know, I mean, that's one of the things we can look at. And the compost does actually have a, a long-term benefit also to landscaping and, and the yards around whoever buys it. So it's a, it's a good move.
Councilmember Peck.
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. I think this is both an economical and environmental issue. If we don't do both of them at the same time, we're just going to have to come back later and address the fact that the landfills are getting full. So doing it all at the same time, to me, makes sense. And when we, you talk about marketing, I think part of that would also be explaining the difference between recycling and composting, because a lot of people are very confused, thinking that we're already doing this, so why do we need another program? So I think that would be a major part.
Councilmember Christensen.
I would personally support the pay-as-you-throw being implemented with no phase-in, just as soon as possible. And I also, of course, support the composting, because that is, in the long-term, just as we, we voted for the Windy Gap firming project, this is a long-term interest of the city to keep our resources and keep our ability to take things to the landfill longer. You know, when we, when I got my 48-gallon bucket, I was told that I had to stick with that decision for six months. And so I would suggest that you implement that as well, because that would keep from this, this churn of people just deciding they're going to do it in the summer and stuff like that. It's, it's already the policy for any change in your system, and I think that makes sense. I think people understand that, and you can say that this is already our policy for any change that you make. I would also like to point out that this is a fairly inexpensive thing. I looked at, when I was over in Superior a while back, I looked at their composting service. They offer private composting service for $20 a month. So this is, this is a good deal for those of us who want to compost. And I like Councilman Moore's suggestion for a web video, including the differences, as Councilwoman Peck mentioned, about composting versus recycling. Many of the things that we're putting into recycling now are not even able to put into recycling, will be able to put into composting. And that might help people understand the benefits of this, too, over the long term. And thank you very much for, this is very clear, I think, to everybody who's watching, and everybody, all of us who are trying to make this decision. So thank you so much for all the, the hard work you've put in over the years to get this moving forward.
Councilmember Santos.
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. Well, I would agree that it's taken some time to get here, because people wanted us to rush this. I love compromises. At least at this level, we can still compromise with one another. The seven of us can compromise. Because I was not in favor of a opt-out or mandatory composting. Residents that want it now can have it. You're going to have to pay for it. And hopefully, those individuals and organizations that are, you know, all about composting everything else, will get the word out that after a certain date, you may be on a waiting list. You know, Bob, I would love to see you have 35%. Not that I'm looking to buy more vehicles anytime soon. However, you know, I do think a phase-in for the, the pay-as-you-throw is reasonable. Folks understand, smaller increments of rate increases than a wham, it's really going to change from 1527 to, go back one, 1527 to 24 and change. You know, thank you, $24. So again, a phase-in approach, I would like to see, and I would support. Again, I'm glad that we were able to have those conversations, talk about what's being done by IBM. What is, what are the options that we had? It was great to see, I hadn't seen Lisa Skuma in several years, and I knew that's what she did, and I'm glad we, we used her, and got, got the recommendations that we do, that we have, and hopefully will pass. But I would also encourage the video be something that, not only we show on our stations, but also within the senior center. The school district, yeah. All, you know, but especially in the senior center. When I came, when I, one of my last board meetings, I got that question from, from a board member. Tell me about the new rates in garbage and composting. And I did it just like that. They're two separate issues. And once I explained it, everyone understood. So yeah, it's, it's easy to explain, so hopefully the, the video will be easy to produce, but it needs to be, you know, City Line, Rhythm on the Rivers coming up, about what we're going to do next year. And again, those organizations that would like to see this, and have been hammering us about this, and sometimes not in a really friendly way, here are your marching orders. Get those lists and those names to Bob, so we can have a nice list of 20, at least 25% or more, that the residents that actually want this, or the price is going to go up.
We'll be looking for actors for that video? Yeah. All right. Councilmember Bagley.
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. Just very briefly, I didn't comment, I guess, I don't think it matters whether we do a phase-in or a no-phase-in. I think that a, a phase-in would allow people to just yell at council, saying, "Why do you guys increase your rates every year?" I think the advantage of a no-phase-in, but then again, I also think it would be probably best for households to, to kind of ease into the pot of boiling water. I think that no-phase-in, there is an advantage there, because I think that the word's already out, that we're going from $15 to $24, so people already, are already upset, you know? So I, I mean, it doesn't matter. You know, I, I think that whatever's best for city staff to financially make it work, to bet, to assure the best financial success of the program, is what we should go with, because there's ups and downs, and I think they cancel out.
Mayor and Council, we, either program achieves the financial goals we would have for the program. So I was hoping to get direction tonight on this. We could, yes, we could prepare, I suppose, two ordinances and have this discussion again.
Let's just do one. Let's just make a decision tonight.
Go ahead, guys. I'm, I'm apathetic, so you guys can make this decision.
Councilmember Finley.
I know, he doesn't want to call on me tonight. Did I upset you?
Sorry. I just looked at my lap, and I go read the small screen.
My, my experience is different than Councilmember Santos's. When I explain it, people are still mad, because they say, "If this is really a right sizing, and the 48-gallon users have been subsidizing the 96-gallon users, why are their rates increasing when they've already been subsidizing the 98-gallon folks?" I think it would have been helpful, hindsight's always 20/20, but I think it would have been helpful had people understood all of the different things that go into this rate, what we're actually paying for, and what it would have raised to, what amount it would have had to have gone to, had we not right-sized, to understand that we were going to increase your rate anyway. This is just a way to help you pay as you throw, which makes more sense. Because when I explain it to people, they're, they're still mad. And I, especially those who think that we're just subsidizing composting, even though you can tell them till you're blue in the face, that no, they are two separate things, they still see it as that, because they don't know why we're having to increase these rates. I think if we had a better explanation of why those rates are increased, that would be helpful. I don't think we should phase it in, let's just hit them with it. My, I would make the motion that we have no phase-in.
Well, okay, I guess, well, yeah.
There's a motion in a second.
Yeah. All right, there's been a motion in a second for no phase-in. Just hit them with the, so let's vote on that.
The motion is, let's just hit them, no phase-in? Is that, did you get that right in the minute?
I can't wait, I can't wait for that. Yeah, I didn't second that, but I will vote for it.
Okay, ready? Let's vote. I'm not seeing on my, putting.
Do you turn that, please?
Okay. Okay.
Hands. It's God's way of saying we should have no trash.
Oh, okay, now we got it.
There's nothing there. So hands for the motion.
Okay, whose is for the motion? Raise your hand. Okay, so that's five to two passes.
And dissent.
Yeah, they had two dissents by.
Believe in pay-as-you-throw, but not with a phase-in.
All right.
More.
Yes.
Good job.
Okay. Awesome.
And I'm assuming we're moving forward with the composting program.
Yes, so you, you'll be able to make that decision in a first reading, probably on May 10th. We'll bring that back.
Something's going to be a fun meeting for me.
Yes.
But we're unanimous right now, I just want to point that out. Everybody's for it, we're moving forward. Compromise works.
Yes.
You don't want three hours of.
Thank you.
You don't have to have those anymore.
Okay. I guess that's the last item. Now it's time for mayor and council comments. Councilmember Finley.
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. Business of the Week, there's a new business downtown called Your at 381 Main Street. They are on a mission to provide customers with quality-made, well-designed, responsibly manufactured goods that are practical for everyday use. Very different, very, very uptown for our downtown, so you should go check out Your at 381 Main Street.
Councilmember Peck.
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. I'd like to announce that the Youth of the Earth Day event was scheduled for the 16th, but because of our incredibly snowy weekend, it has been rescheduled to the 30th, and it's going to be at the farmer's market, a lot of great booths by all kinds of organizations, mostly children. I think everybody should go. It's going to be from 8:30 to 2:00, or?
9:01.
9:01. You can go to 8:30, though. Buy some vegetables.
Councilmember Bagley.
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. It's not my, it's not my ward, but I, I heard a lot of folks expressing some, some angst about sunset and the traffic and whatnot. So what is the easiest way for city staff to communicate with them, talk about traffic mitigation, easing the speed in those areas from 30 to 25, enforcement, et cetera? What is the easiest way for staff to make, to address those concerns?
So staff has already, there was an email just going back and forth as, as the conversations were occurring, and so we're going to have those conversations. I think some points about the bridge, it is bigger, and it is longer, but it's still a two-lane road going through there, so, and there's going to be sidewalks and those pieces, but we will evaluate that. Again, you have the MUTCD standards that you look at, as you're evaluating all the data in terms of what the, what adjustments, if any, you need to make. So we will have staff working on that. I would encourage them to get with Public Works and Natural Resources, and we can communicate that information to them.
Do you need anything else from city?
Nope.
Okay, all right, cool. Thank you.
Councilmember Moore.
Well, that happens to be my ward, and I hear about a lot of people that probably don't live along that street, are looking forward to, probably for the same reasons that we were brought up here, with traffic and ease of access, and all, all the things that were talked about during the public invited to be heard. The item I have tonight is, I'd like to support the youth council representative, at least send a couple of them to National League of Cities in November. They have a really good program to develop leadership skills, and it would be a good opportunity for our youth council to be represented at National League of Cities. There's a lot of youth there. They have programs just for the youth council members, and I would like to move that we would spend up to $5,000 of council contingency on a $1 to $1 match, for, to have them raise some of their own funds, and arrange, have the youth count, youth center, youth council arrange all the, all the logistics and the, and the chaperones.
All in, in favor?
Let me try it. All in favor, I know, but if you don't mind.
Okay.
All in favor, it's unanimous.
It was unanimous.
Thank you.
Councilmember Christensen.
I, Sunset Bridge is in my neighborhood, so I really would hardly encourage us to, to do some of the things that were suggested, such as more enforcement and turning from Boston north, putting, making that a 25 mile an hour speed limit. I do want to say, though, that I do think that when we put Boston through, that will be a huge relief for that neighborhood, because, and that's the only hope I have. Right now, Third Avenue is inappropriate freeway, and Sunset's an inappropriate freeway, but once we get Boston through, I, I hope that will really help our neighborhood, because it's, it's kind of a mess, and it's very difficult to figure out what we could do. These are, we can't move the homes, and we like our homes. We, we want to be there. In addition to the Earth event, the Youth of the Earth Festival on the 30th, which is also the Cinco de Mayo Day, unfortunately, two great events, there's also, I would like to remind people, a, another Earth Day festival on the 22nd, which is this Friday. It's from 6:30 to 9:00 at Silver Creek High School. And there'll be talks with three climatologists and climate experts, and there'll also be a movie called The Bear, The Earth, a Disney movie. So it'll be fun for families, and check it out. That's all I have to say. Have a good weekend.
All right. I think I'm going to jump in here real quick. First off, I want to be the first person on the list to sign up for composting, so put me on the list.
They all did that yesterday.
Okay. All right. Also, tomorrow is my daughter Allison's 30th anniversary. Also, tomorrow is my daughter Allison's 30th anniversary, so happy anniversary, Allison. Councilmember Peck, okay, all right. City manager, any comments?
No comments, mayor, council.
City attorney, any comments?
Of course not.
No comments, mayor.
All right, this meeting is adjourned.